Okay, it's six thirty, so I'd like to start this study session of Urbana School District 116. Roll call, please.
Member Baxley?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Langendorf? Here. Member Staton? Member Hassanaka? Vice President Exum?
Here.
President Palowski?
Here. We do have a quorum. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda? No, okay, saying none. It is now time for citizen statements. If anybody would like to make a statement before the board, please fill out one of these goldenrod sheets that are located in the back of the room and hand it to our recording secretary, Lori Johnson, who's there in the black and flower print shirt. First up tonight is John Elliott.
Hi, my name's John. I have three children currently in Urbana School District, two more to come. And the first thing I want to share tonight is something I don't think is acknowledged enough in these sorts of proceedings, and that is just that you all have a difficult job. You really do. My dad was a school board member and president for many years. I saw firsthand the toll that that took on him. My first job out of college was as a school teacher in an underserved school in Atlanta, Georgia. We've been involved in this district for about the last eight years, and so I get it. You all have a difficult job, and when you prepare for and engage in meetings like this one, you're attempting to try to solve some very difficult and complex problems for which there are often no easy or clear answers. And so I want to thank you for the work that you all have put in and continue to put in to try to find answers to those problems. When it comes to what those answers or solutions are, I'll be the first to admit, I'm not an expert. I'm not an expert in educational policy, school reform. You know, I haven't studied the data that you all have presumably studied. I haven't, you know, read the research that you all have presumably read. And so when it comes to some of the particular issues you're discussing tonight and what you may decide or not decide, I don't feel qualified to even offer strong opinions about what those could or should be. The one thing I do know a little bit about is leadership. I run a management consulting practice where every day I get the opportunity to advise leaders in all different fields, including education, about how to build the healthiest teams possible. And what I can tell you from my experience and expertise in that field is that the number one rule, and really I'd probably put this as, you know, number one, two, three, four, and five, is trust is everything. Trust is everything. It never ceases to amaze me how much can be accomplished, the problems that can be solved, the adversity that can be overcome when trust is high. But unfortunately, it's equally amazing how little can be accomplished when trust is low. And sadly, what I've observed in this district over the last several years and recent months is a case study in the latter. Everywhere I look, trust is being eroded or has been eroded, whether that's between board members, board members and school board members, school board members and certain faculty members, school board and parents. Really, everywhere I look, I see trust unraveling at the seams. And I'm not here to suggest that you all are exclusively to blame for that, but because you're the leaders of this district, I am here to say you are primarily responsible for repairing it. And if I have just, I guess, one encouragement or exhortation as you go forward as leaders, it's make rebuilding trust your number one priority, above any tactical decision you'll make tonight or in the weeks to come. I think rebuilding trust has to be number one, because until that's accomplished, there's just a ceiling on how healthy this district can be, how effective we can be, and frankly, I think our kids deserve better. Thanks.
Thank you. That's much appreciated. Next up is Janelle Elliott.
Good evening. Congrats, Ms. Norton, on your recent new job leaving us, but congrats. Yeah, Janelle, I've talked to you before. I have five kids. We've been in Urbana School District about eight years. I come tonight sad and frustrated. The primary reason isn't because Yankee Ridge is on the table to be dissolved, but that would be a close second. The primary reason is a process that's led us to this point. In the fall of 2022, I heard about the possibility of a DL school with the focus being on Lille. You engaged in a process that prioritized the dual-language, language-speaking families while excluding monolingual families and their staff from giving input in the matter. Understandably, they were upset as conversations steered towards Lille becoming the DL school, which would displace the monolingual staff and students without engaging them in input or conversations, potentially to Wiley, which would then need to be fixed and moved again. And so there wasn't a comprehensive plan. Lille fought and won, and they got to keep their neighborhood school, but you lost a lot of trust in the process. Then what felt like out of nowhere to me, Wiley gets put on the chopping block next. Again, families and staff have to go digging and fighting for information. They continually ask for a plan or please slow down. In a rushed process, Wiley's closed or paused, and you broke the trust of another group of families and staff. And still, there didn't seem to be a strategic plan presented. During all of this, rumors began that Yankee Ridge could become the DL school. And so our principal then, Dr. Micah Jackson, set up a meeting with us and Dr. Ivory Tatum so that we could just ask direct questions to the source. We're aware that any school could be put on the table, and we weren't necessarily against a DL school. We just didn't want it to be a surprise. We asked that we operate with transparency and better communication than we had seen with Lille and Wiley. And in that conversation, we are assured that Yankee Ridge was not being considered, in part because we already housed the French program, and we weren't planning on putting the programs together. Shortly after that, a committee was formed, one that I ended up co-chairing very imperfectly. And what was asked of us in that time period felt unreasonable. There wasn't enough time to do proper research. I personally came into the committee curious about a sixth-grade center, but after reviewing data, came to a conclusion for myself that we need to help kids far before sixth grade and that that added transition would not be a helpful one. By crowding the elementary schools, which we're experiencing right now, we're actually further hurting the chances of the kids that we'll eventually send to our middle school. We need to fix what's broken, starting with elementary, in my opinion. But the board approved what was a majority vote of the committee to ask for a sixth-grade center. And Wiley families were crushed, but promised not to be moved any more times. And now, some of them will be moved again. Earlier in this process, I also spoke with Board President Paul Palowski during the committee, because the committee became so focused on sixth-grade center that I wondered, are we still considering a dual-language school? Shouldn't that be part of this conversation about what Wiley should become? And so I just wondered, are we deciding, is Wiley a sixth-grade center or a dual-language school? Or could we do both? I was worried that would be too much for elementary schools. It would be too much to go from six neighborhood to four. And we agreed upon that in our conversation, that those changes would be too much. And so I operated what now appears to be under a wrong assumption, that if the board approved a sixth-grade center, that we would not be bringing the dual-language school back on the table. But the same night that the board approved the sixth-grade center, Jo Weemont brought up the idea of the DL school again, and here we are. And so it leaves me wondering, was that always the plan? Was the plan to isolate these decisions so that that's done before we move to the next one? Or have we truly been operating without a comprehensive plan, one that people have been asking for? Then in January, we had what felt a bit rushed again to let the redistricting committee know, are we doing a DL school or not? I emailed you about this. I've wondered, did we resurvey everybody? Did we include more data? And I know we had more people come speak, and I don't know what happened behind the scenes, but I do know that we didn't talk to any of the schools who would be housing the DL program. And so to say yes to the dual-language program, all being in one school together, is to then displace, which you know, but to displace hundreds of students, most of whom are below poverty level and are behind and below grade level. And it's also displacing their staff, who they've built deep relationships with. And it leaves me wondering, did these staff find out the same night I did that their school might be dissolved? And on a separate but similar note, I've wondered, did we speak to the interventionists before dissolving their positions into something else? I was talking to my sister-in-law, who's a certified SPED teacher, and she kind of summed up what I was thinking, and she said, the best thing we can do for our kids is have quality teachers. All other decisions are only in the best interest of kids, so long as we have and retain our quality staff. And from my vantage point, the way we've been operating has not been communicating care and value to our staff. And I think that's going to cost us dearly. And so as we make a decision that we think might be in the best interest of the kids, if we don't have our best qualified teachers, we may be working against ourselves. And so as you've made these isolated decisions, we're able to say yes to people looking at us without hearing from the people who are also going to be impacted by these decisions we're making. This can be said of both us and Thomas Payne. We love our schools. We love our communities. We love our staff. We think they're awesome. They have relationships built that we don't want to see split up, because they support each other in a very difficult profession. Another quote I'll end with is, disunity is a result of many conversations that didn't happen. And when I heard that this weekend, I thought of us right now. And this is not how I wanted to end. The lack of plan, or the lack of transparency, or both, has led us to this point, and it's lost my trust, too. I urge you to reconsider some of the decisions that have brought us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janelle. Next up is Amy Bader.
Hi, my name is Amy Bader, and I have two kids at Yankee Ridge, and I'm also a very involved parent there. Until this afternoon, Yankee Ridge staff hadn't been asked about their opinions or questions concerning potential changes at Yankee Ridge. We, as a PTA, asked Yankee Ridge three simple questions, and we want to share some of those answers with you. Our first question was, would you remain in the district if Yankee Ridge becomes a dual-language school? We had 21 people respond, 21 staff members respond, seven of which were non-tenured staff or teachers. 14 were tenured teachers. The first question we asked, are you staying in the district? It was a yes, no, or undecided, and there was room for comments. So some of the answers to that question was undecided. I don't see a reason why I should stay in the district, because all our foreign students and their families won't have the support they need. A simple no. Undecided, whether I stay or not depends on how drastic staff changes are and how French dual-language is treated as a result of the change. No, I'm retiring. Undecided. No, the only reason I work in the district is because of the Yankee Ridge staff and community. Undecided. I will most likely stay in the district, but I am also keeping my options open. No. The staff and community at Yankee Ridge have been the main reason I have remained in the Urbana School District 116. I had no intentions of leaving before USC, I had no intentions of leaving USC until the news of Yankee Ridge possibly being scattered throughout the district. No, I will probably go to Champaign. Undecided. Undecided. I really love my team and staff and my hallway, so that is what I love about teaching right now. If I switch buildings, I have no idea who my team will be. Undecided. I am actively pursuing other opportunities. No. Yes, I plan to follow my French dual-language students wherever admin sends them. Undecided. Depends on how people are placed, including admin decisions. Undecided. I have started looking elsewhere. Undecided. I got moved from Wiley, so I would not be too happy to move again. No. Undecided. The only reason I would consider staying in the district is because of my sick days. Yes. No. The last two years have been very difficult. The only reason why I returned last year, or would in the future, is because of the incredible team and staff at Yankee Ridge. It would be like losing my family. The second question we asked is, do you have any questions that you would have liked to ask? And some of the questions that our staff came up with was, why can't they make other schools dual-language and keep the French dual-language at Yankee Ridge? Think about the French families in the district and in the community. The French dual-language program has decreased in size. Are there any plans of bringing attention to the program and making the community aware that they can enroll their students? Will the Spanish dual-language get the bulk of our support? Why is the final decision being held out until April? If Yankee Ridge becomes dual-language, where do the students who are part of the intensive instructional program go? SRL, co-teaching, new literacy curriculum, sixth-grade center, dual-language school, new math curriculum, these are just to name a few of the many initiatives the district has taken on. Why does everything have to be all at once? Yankee Ridge has an 87% poverty rate. Why is that rate significantly different from DPW? Do you believe having many tenured teachers and having strong, reliable, grade-level teams is a major reason to keep the Yankee Ridge community together? What is the rationale behind disrupting an entire community when Wiley will soon be available? There is no definitive research to support a sixth-grade center at this time. How can one group of teachers outweigh others? Dual-language teachers need to share resource, collaborate, but separating sixth grade and UMS, why? Why is their safety more important than any of our other students? Our students are behind in all major subjects. How is all of this transition helping? And I'm going to pause here, and Abby's going to finish when it's her turn.
Thank you. Next up is Abby Millar.
Hi, my name's Abby Millar. I have two students at the middle school and three students at Yankee Ridge currently. I'm going to pick up where Amy left off, just finishing answering our second question. Will we get a say in location and people who we work with? How is it in the best interest to relocate 460 students, some of which, Wiley, were already moved last year? How are students being disturbed? Who can advocate for students if they and staff are all over? What happens to our ISBE rating and those funds if Yankee Ridge becomes the Spanish dual-language school? Has there been considerations or thought about how this is going to affect our students and families negatively, especially those who were moved last year from Wiley? Why not use Wiley? We don't have the staff for a sixth-grade center. Why is it one of our schools, when DPW already houses the Spanish dual-language program? Knowing there is a national teacher shortage, why would you willingly and knowingly choose a building where many amazing teachers and staff will leave the district have chosen? Wiley staff was not compensated for the time required to pack and move their rooms. Can we assume the same will be true here? Many students from Wiley are just now adjusting to new home schools. Is it worth making them transition again so soon? Our final opportunity for them to just send communication was through comments and statements that they might want to share. Why not open up Wiley and make it another dual-language school instead of making Yankee Ridge employees lose their building in the community we've created throughout the years? We've already had a rough school year with all the changes to our school, and it feels like our voices go unheard. Another transition so soon is too much. People's lives are in jeopardy. I feel like the staff and parents' lives are on hold, and I feel this is unfair. I also feel that the decision is already known. Yankee Ridge has been my home away from home for the last four years. The people I work with are not only colleagues, but a part of my school family. We support each other and our students. We tend to go from one idea to the next without really thinking it through. Then a year later, the district goes completely back on an idea or moves on to something new without finishing the first, second, or third initiative. We need to slow down with all the changes. Too many things changing and not enough conversations. Everything is happening so quickly and without any input from those who are actually directly impacted. We love our grade-level teams. We lean on our team. We go to our team members for advice, support, and have real, genuine relationships. I would not have stayed the last four years if it wasn't for these teachers. So many of us have stayed in the Urbana District as long as we have, only because of the teachers we've worked closely with at Yankee Ridge. It's important not to disrupt any school family unless it is absolutely necessary. This does not seem to be absolutely necessary. The district is implementing way too many top-down initiatives at once, and they seem to lose a lot of families and teachers. It will not improve the dual-language or sixth-grade program. You will lose more teachers, which impacts learning. I spoke to the board's request to keep first kindergarten and first-grade French separated and to be able to keep French dual-language at Yankee Ridge, so that we don't lose any more students. I am heartbroken that this decision is being made. I hope we take Gen Ed teachers' consideration into play as much as they did dual-language. This staff is amazing. I will work, will never work for another staff as cohesive and dedicated as this. Our staff is a family, and have worked together for an extended time. Too many changes too fast. If this plan causes us to move again, I don't think it's a wise decision. In two years, we're going from six schools to neighborhood schools of only four. It's not central offices school. It's not the staff school. It's our kids' schools. Four years ago, it was taken from them, and it's happening again. This affects so many families, staff, and community members. This is too much change, too fast. This has been a terrible start to a second semester. The amount of anxiety we have as a staff is unreal. We, as a Yankee Ridge dual-language, teachers would like to stay at Yankee Ridge and remain a neighborhood school. Teaching has become increasingly difficult. Having staff that truly show up for each other and for the students is so rare. We are truly like a family. Thank you for listening to our staff.
Thank you. Abby, if you wouldn't mind sending that, especially the questions, to the board and administration. We'd like an opportunity to respond back.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you. Next up is Lacey Elliott.
Sorry, it's taking a minute to load. Here we go. Okay, good evening. I am also a parent at Yankee Ridge. I have two kids in the French program. Usually, I view my role in the district as baking cookies for teachers and raising money for bounce houses. I am not usually one to show up and call people out in public for lying, but that is why I'm here tonight. To be clear, I would be for a dual-language school, but in a way that considers the needs of all of our kids. I'm frustrated with the way the district is going about this process, and here's why. During the closing of Wiley, Wiley families were told they wouldn't be moved twice because of redistricting. On January 9th, Dr. Ivory Tatum said, and I quote, "Wiley families, wherever they are, will be given a choice. You can stay where you are based on where you were reassigned. If you're happy there, great, that's where you would stay. But based on where you live, if your boundary is changing and you would like to move to a new school, then they would be given that opportunity to make that choice." End quote. On January 23rd, DPW was eliminated from the discussion of where the dual-language school will be placed, leaving two schools, Thomas Payne and Yankee Ridge. And where are all the Wiley kids? Well, most of them, Thomas Payne, Yankee Ridge. Thomas Payne has 87, Yankee Ridge has 40. Students can only enter dual-language in kindergarten and first grade. Wiley was closed one year ago, so that the youngest kids from Wiley are going to be in second grade next year. That means there is not a single Wiley child who will be able to enter the dual-language program, so there will be no family choice for those families, whatever school dual-language takes over. That is a completely empty promise. It was a lie. And board members who voted yes for dual-language, you allowed that to happen. We have all known from the beginning of the redistricting process how big each school is. Dr. Ivory Tatum said she didn't have a crystal ball last year to see that putting dual-language at Lille wouldn't fit in with our current numbers now, but it didn't take a crystal ball a month ago to know how big these schools are going to be and that it would come down to these two schools. Moving Wiley kids twice was a completely predictable outcome to voting yes for dual-language school, and with just a little bit of forethought, completely preventable. So besides lying to us, the current plan for all this quick movement, including a sixth-grade center, is directly oppositional to educational research. In 2017, MIT did a huge study on New York City schools examining the effect of structural moves on students, and they found that for each building move, students had significant decreases in both reading and math scores. Let's just talk about our current fourth graders, okay? This fourth-grade class is the one that missed the end of kindergarten. Most of first grade was online during the pandemic. To humanize this just a little bit, my neighbor's son was in third grade last year at Wiley. This year, he's in fourth grade at Yankee Ridge. If Yankee Ridge becomes the dual-language school, next year will be in fifth grade somewhere else, then he'll go to the sixth-grade center, and the year after that, he will go to the middle school. That means that my neighbor's son will go to five schools in five years. And if you include high school, that's six different schools in seven years. And if they put it at Thomas Payne, it's the exact same thing for the Wiley kids who are there. And then, once the dust settles and our kids are in their new schools, it's still going to be three transitions in four years, or four different schools in five years. I just, based on MIT's research, I think we can't expect worse scores with all this change. So short-term, I think it's really bad for kids, but long-term, it's still really bad for kids. We're putting into action a plan that first, has not been honest to the Wiley families that we've already harmed. Second, is directly opposing research on what is best. And third, you're displacing teachers during a teacher shortage. Again, you are planning to displace a second entire building full of teachers, and I just, I mean, we just heard that there were two yeses, I think, in our whole survey, that people will stay. So I really urge you guys, please reconsider. This plan won't work. It's a freight train going nowhere, but really, really quickly, we will absolutely have worse scores in five years. Pause the chaos. My suggestion would be to renovate Wiley, make it a K8 dual-language school, so nobody else loses their neighborhood school. Kids have fewer transitions, and we still relive crowding at the middle school. I would also support switching elementary buildings back to K6 if it was carefully planned with teacher buy-in. But please, guys, make a five-year plan or even a two-year plan. Stop blindly voting on tiny steps in a plan that ends up hurting our children. Board members, I'm sure your heart behind the dual-language school was not to lie to Wiley families. I'm sure that's not your intention, but that is what happened, because we didn't have all the pieces in place before that vote happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lauren Kaplos, please.
Hello, can everyone hear me? All right. I'm a frequent flyer, so hello again. The board received my email last night, but for the sake of those watching and public record, I just want to make it clear, picking Yankee Ridge for the dual-language school will displace roughly 40 students who were promised that they would be able to stay. Picking Thomas Payne would displace roughly 80, who were promised they would be able to stay. Wiley families knew this was the outcome. I sat before you months ago when Wiley was being decided, and I told you, Wiley children will be sent to three schools if you do this, and that is exactly what is happening. Moving them to a third elementary school is damaging. I'm actually one of your strongest allies when it comes to redistricting, believe it or not. I am strongly in favor of urgently redistricting. I disagree with a lot of folks, some of whom I work with and in a professional capacity see outside of this space. So I publicly disagree with people I work with on this point, right? To speak here publicly about redistricting. I think it does need to happen urgently, because my family was supposed to be bussed past two closer elementary schools. We were closer to King, and we were closer to Lille, but we were supposed to be bussed all the way to Wiley. So yeah, I personally know that neighborhood schools exist for some people and not for others. And those lines are often class-based and racial. But I want to emphasize that making Yankee Ridge or Thomas Payne the dual-language school is not the right decision. And this is not a runaway train. It's left the station, but the brakes are still working. The engineers and conductors have different mechanisms to slow the train and choose the correct path. Sorry, that's kind of a tortured metaphor, but we're barreling down the path, but there are brakes. You, as the board, have power to make motions to propose that, hey, maybe we make Wiley, now that what's done is done. Maybe we make Miley the single dual-language school. Maybe we move our elementary schools back to K through six. I'd actually be in favor of that, because of all the things I've been reading about fewer transitions being helpful, and that still alleviates the crowding issues at the middle school. So I'm trying to figure out if we can figure out a way together to make Wiley the dual-language school. It's central. Why not make it the dual-language school at this point? Again, the Wiley Facilities Committee, from the eyes of many, many people in this community, was illegitimately formed. It was stacked with middle-school representation, people who It was stacked with middle-school representation, people who had working relationships with the district, who were listed as parent, but really, they were employed by the district, right? People who had ambitions beyond just one committee. While many Wiley families begged and pleaded to get on that committee, but were not put on that committee. Wiley families have disengaged at this point. I think I'm the only Wiley parent here today. And I think I'm still engaging. Put me on any thankless committee you want. I will serve. Just, I think, please. I think you can still keep a lot of people happy. I think you'll still need to move a lot of people, and I don't disagree with the movement necessarily, if we do it in a way that's fair and equitable. But I don't think putting that dual-language school at Payne or Yankee Ridge is the right solution. And I think with the Wiley school now being renovated, now being empty, not that much work has been done. It could still be made the dual-language school, and you can still alleviate crowding at the middle school by doing things that way. So I don't know what other concerns there are about making Wiley the dual-language school, but it would be a great, important point of discussion, I think, for a lot of people to hear the rationale, because now that it is being closed, everyone I've talked to is like, well, why not make Wiley the dual-language school? Everyone I've talked to, teachers, staff, parents, that's, that's what I'm hearing. So now that the train has left the station, okay, Wiley's not going to be a neighborhood school anymore. Let's figure out a way to make this work. And let's be honest about how the sixth-grade center came about and how that committee seemed to have a predetermined collusion, conclusion based on the representation that was there and the optics of that, whether or not it was intentional that the committee had such high middle-school representation. Thank you.
Thank you for your continued engagement. Do appreciate it. Next up is Kirk Stodola.
Yeah, thanks. I guess I was going to talk on the French dual-language program, but first, I want to say, like, every time I watch this stuff, like, the, y'all have a tough job, like John said, and there's a lot to mistrust, and like, I know it's not from what you all have done, but like, somehow building communication, so these things are transparent and getting that message to the families somehow, that has to be worked on, like. Like, you guys don't have, there's not, there's nothing nefarious, not trying to, y'all are working to help our kids, it's just, we're not getting that message somehow, and I just encourage doing other, we're trying different things or something, I don't know. Anyways, I was going to say something on the French dual-language program, in support of it. It seems small now, now that I've listened to other people. But first off, I appreciate that the administration came and talked with us families about three, four weeks ago or something like that, saying, we're going to keep the program, and we're sporting the program. From my point of view, though, support isn't, let's keep shrinking classes down to where we only have maybe one or two classes. No, no one's going to want to be a part of that program. Like, you're not going to send your kid to a, to a, do a language program where you have all five grades in the same class. To me, support is actually like working to build that program and support the kids, support the kids that need the program and the families that are in it. I, I think some tangible things that we could do is potentially try to promote it more, get that, get the word out, outreach, and then also potentially moving back the date when parents have to decide to be a part of the program, right? This last year, I think it was May 5th. What, thirty percent of the kids are like mandated by the state to have naps during school at that time? You know, like, as a parent, you're not thinking about these decisions that are coming up in, in August, so to me, I would just like to, I think before we keep shrinking it to the point where no one wants to be a part of it, let's work to try and grow it, because it, it is working and the families are benefiting from it, so those are sort of my points.
Thank you. Next up is Emma Aronhart.
Hi, I am a French dual-language parent at Yankee Ridge, so I wanted to talk about French dual-language and redistricting tonight. So first thing I want to discuss is more transparency and accountability for your promises and actions. Second, advocacy for the proper investment into the French dual-language program. And finally, support for Yankee Ridge to remain a monolingual neighborhood school with their French dual-language program. The district needs to be more accountable for transparency. You have been discussing redistricting for months, if not longer, but the Tenants Map webpage was just updated last week with reference to redistricting at all. And it still provides no information on how to give input at the upcoming meetings later this month. I appreciate that you shared the public comment dates via social media and email last week, but you need to be reaching out through every possible means to not just current families, but everyone in the community. I'm confident your currently limited communications are not reaching all impacted parties. Just four weeks ago, Dr. Ivory Tatum and this board committed that Wiley students would be given the opportunity to either stay in the school they were assigned this year or relocate to the redistricted school. As other parents have already referenced, Wiley students relocated to King, Thomas Payne, and Yankee Ridge. You guys narrowed last meeting to just Yankee Ridge and Thomas Payne, so Wiley students will be displaced no matter what if you go forward with that plan. So you guys are not honoring your promises, which leads me to the French dual-language program. I appreciate the commitments that administration gave us in January, including finishing the program for all students who start and continuing kindergarten enrollment for the next two years. But honestly, I don't know if we can believe that, seeing the broken promises you guys have made for Wiley students. We need real investment from administrators to see enrollment grow. I understand there are factors outside the district's control, but I do not believe they are putting in a good faith effort to retain eligible French households in the program. I know we are a smaller program, and there are several problems district-wide, but our program is excelling academically, so don't disregard us. Show the community that our program is successful. Invite eligible French households to visit our classrooms or meet with our amazing French dual-language teachers, so they can see firsthand the benefits of joining the French dual-language program. Should the district succeed in retaining the current nine eligible French scholars, and they honor the fifty-fifty split, that would make a classroom of eighteen for kindergarten this year. This would negate the need for a split K-1 classroom, which would greatly benefit those students and the teachers as academic and behavioral achievements for kindergartners and first graders differ greatly. At the French dual-language parent meeting with administrators, they committed to not turning away French scholars due to capacity in a split K-1 room. However, they would not commit to maintaining the fifty-fifty split and moving away from K-1 split. In other words, they may turn away English scholars in favor of maintaining a K-1 split. It perplexes me that the district questions our future due to low enrollment, but are not committed to maximizing our enrollment. I want a commitment from the district that should French enrollment be strong, they will accept the same number of English scholars and maintain a separate kindergarten classroom. Finally, I wanted to advocate for Yankee Ridge to remain a neighborhood monolingual school with the French dual-language track as it currently exists. As Madam Florence referenced in the last meeting, we cannot afford to lose any French dual-language students, and relocating buildings has a track record for losing students. Furthermore, I do not believe it is in the best interest to combine the Spanish dual-language and French dual-language into the same building. It's no secret that Urbana is facing teaching shortages like much of the nation, and as I understand it, the district has filled some Spanish dual-language positions with teachers that speak only Spanish. From my perspective, that seems like a good solution. And if Spanish dual-language is in a building by itself, it could expand to other positions like fine arts, PE, lunchroom supervisors, after-school programs, and elsewhere within the building. However, if French is in the same building, this would be greatly detrimental to our French dual-language scholars. I agree with the board's previous comments that a French and a Spanish speaker could effectively communicate if somebody got lost in the hallway, but having instructions solely in a third language is not going to be conducive to our French scholars. Finally, there was reference last meeting to the capacity of Yankee Ridge and Thomas Payne, with Yankee Ridge having a maximum capacity of about twenty-five students more. But if French dual-language remains at Yankee Ridge with our over sixty students, that would actually create a net loss of over thirty-five compared to Thomas Payne. So I just want all of those to be in considerations as you guys continue to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. And these next two, I believe, are together. Julie Duval and Lindsay, I'm sorry, Amaravu, thank you so much. I will. I know.
Hi, my name is Julie Duval. I am a parent of Urbana School District, as well as a grandparent of a student at Thomas Payne. This, my, I have a presentation or something to say, and this is not as a Thomas parent, Thomas Payne parent or grandparent, it is as a sped advocate's point of view. The board is in the process of making a decision whether the dual-language problem, program, sorry, program, will be housed in Thomas Payne or Yankee Ridge. Regardless of your decision, multiple students and staff will be relocated to other schools within the district. Tonight, I am here to bring attention to the board about how your decision can affect the current and future sped students within the district. The building. When the district was planning the Thomas Payne renovations, sorry, multiple staff, parents, and community member, community members were involved giving input to design a sped-friendly building, space, and service options, such as large single restroom built specifically for sped students to accommodate the needs of a shower and changing area, an OT sensory room with a large climbing structure for students to work on gross motor, a new playground that Thomas Payne has waited years for, that is adapted for our students to be able to assess. The PTA and other community agencies purposely provided funds for the TP playground to have adaptive playground equipment. Sorry, I don't have my glasses. Staffing. Will sped teachers be relocated to the same, to the same building, or will they be relocated throughout the district? The sped teachers work together, and splitting them up will change their current ability to support each other and the students' needs. How this affects students and staff. Consistency with related services. Gen Ed teachers for their inclusion opportunities. Peers the students have developed with relationships, some for over a few years. This is valuable acceptance and inclusion, and, and, this is a valuable acceptance and inclusion issue. And the friends and buddies that they will lose. The current sped students are familiar with the building and routines. While it is understandable, regardless of your decision, there are students who will have to make adjustments to a new school building. Yet sped students thrive with consistency of routine in their surroundings. For some sped students, this change will be a setback and cause regression as they get acclimated to a new building. If Thomas Payne is chosen as a dual-language school, I would like to bring the following to your attention. Currently, there is not another school in the district that has all the amenities that Thomas Payne has for sped students. Relocating them to another building without these amenities is taking away from the sped students. The need for the board and the district, there is a need for the board and the district to be transparent and communicate upfront in a timely manner with parents and staff to have the opportunity to prepare the needs for their students. We ask that the board be open and willing to discuss every comment and concern brought to your attention. Be prepared to answer the concerns of the amenities and environment that sped students will be losing. For example, will other playgrounds be updated to have adaptive equipment for the sped students? While there is a definite need for the dual-language students to be together, it should not be at the expense of USD's special-needs students. Please take this information into consideration when making your decision. Thank you.
I am Lindsay Amaravu. I am the parent of two Urbana School District students. One is in middle school, seventh grade, and the other is a fourth grader at Thomas Payne. My fourth grader at Thomas Payne, he is autistic. He went to Yankee Ridge from kindergarten to second grade. He did not have, it's a great school, but he didn't have a good experience there for what he's going through. It was very loud, it was disorganized for his routines, for the type of neurodivergent child that he is. So Thomas Payne has been a blessing for him. He has acclimated to the staff, he has built relationships with the staff, he's familiar with the people, with the building, and he feels safe in that environment. It's really hard when you have an autistic child, because every year you have to start over. Every year you have to start with the needs and with the new teachers and having to explain yourself and explain your son, or things that he needs met. And so going to a whole new school again would have him possibly regress. We've taken three years in psychology to be where we are now, to thrive in the school setting that he is now. So it's a fear that regression is possible for any sped student, and I just would like you to think about that as well. While I don't want to see any school have to be divided, there's going to be a choice. And I'm definitely for the sixth-grade center as well, because having a seventh grader at the middle school, the issues that they have with knives and guns and drugs and, and different things that they are seeing, I think our younger children shouldn't be involved in those things. So I don't think that should be thrown off the table, and definitely for that as well. And just please consider. Thank you.
Thank you. The last participation request I have tonight is from Rob Nagel. If anybody else would like to speak before the board, please fill out a sheet that's located on that table back there. I hand it to Lori Johnson. Thank you.
Hi. As everyone knows, we're moving very quickly towards decisions that affect a lot of students and families and will affect them for many years. Again, I get the sense that we're choosing what to do first, and then we're finding the ways and justifications to, to do that. I want to echo that I think we need to slow down and look at all of the options that are available and reevaluate previously made decisions. When it comes to the sixth-grade center, I don't think this is the right option. I think it continues to displace students, and I think there are other ways to handle the overcrowding at the middle school, as well as give sixth graders the academically appropriate classes that they need. I would be in favor of having sixth grade at elementary school, K through six, but, you know, using some of the investment that was going to be put into Wiley for creating like specialized labs at all of the schools. And so students are not, not just sixth graders would, we would use that, but all of the students could use that, and students in younger years can be introduced to some of the specialized equipment and science, things like that. Just an idea. The other thing too, or having Wiley turning that into a K through eight dual-language school is also a really good idea. I think the issue that I had with the sixth-grade center and the dual-language program was that the goal with unifying the dual-language into one school was to have it in one school, but then they would go to this different sixth-grade center, so there's still that, that separation between the schools and the kids. I think when, when I hear about the consultants and the districts working with the consultants for the redistricting, I think this, what we're talking about here, all of these issues is really what the consultant should be helping on. It seems like they're more focused on sort of like the boundaries and the redistricting, but I don't really see where they're helping with solving all of these issues and really taking the time to talk about all of these issues. All of us parents here, we're, we're free consultants. That's why we're here. We're trying to help as best we can. And so I think we should be engaging these consultants or different consultants more on the issues that the parents are actually bringing up and asking them what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, thank you to all the speakers for engaging with us this evening. Does anybody else wish to make a statement before the board? Seeing no one, next up. There is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting, so is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move for approval.
Second.
Said been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Student Ambassador's report.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. I'm doing our student ambassador report on behalf of me and Paulina. She's going to be here tonight, so let's get into it. Happy Black History Month. Make sure to acknowledge all things that Black people have went through and just make it a good month for everyone. The mayor recognition program is for any UHS student who has at least thirty, thirty volunteer hours throughout the, the school year and is able to participate in this program. They will receive a certificate from the principal and Dr. Ivory Tatum and the mayor of Urbana for this recognition of the hours, and people who complete fifty or seventy or a hundred hours will also be awarded the bronze, silver, or gold. bronze, silver, or gold status. I got the silver. So it's really good to do this and have a lot of volunteer hours because it really helps towards your college and just being a good person overall. The free dental clinic, Parklin, will host a free dental clinic on Saturday, the tenth, from eight AM to noon. Fluorite treatments, kid-focused education, and dental examinations. The cleanings are free, and I think you should really take this opportunity and go get your teeth cleaned for the kids. This past weekend at EIU, the jazz band at UHS and UMS participated in the jazz festival. Shout outs to Jonathan, Will, and Declan, and Michael, who recognized with outstanding soloist awards. And also congratulations to the Jazz Combo, and they came second in their class. The school is hosting a Valentine's Day Spirit Week, so it'll be really nice for all the teachers who are in the building to participate. Monday is Fall in Love with Flannel. Tuesdays is Opposites Attract. Wednesdays are, on Wednesdays, we wear pink. And then Thursdays is a night end, so like pajamas and comfy clothes. One winter night, the National Honor Society participated in this event where students or just people in general spend a night outside to raise awareness and fundraise for the homelessness in Urbana. And we earned one hundred and eighty dollars for the fundraiser, and we hope more people join this year because we have these nice students who did this. So we'd like more engagement next year. Some student shout outs, we have the girls' basketball team's senior night. They did their senior night. And then we have Jaden Burgess Davis, who is going to be singing at the ISHA basketball because he went to all district and he went through lots of rigorous things and lots of things, and he came first. And the whole group from, people from all around the central Illinois area, so this is a really big deal because he had to go through lots and lots of auditions. So he was the number one person, and he gets to sing the national anthem at the basketball game. So that's, that's really good. And then we have, and then we have at the bottom, the band student and the choir student who went to all district, and this is also really good because they had to go through lots of rigorous things as well. And then we have the cheerleading, the cheerleaders who went to one of their competitions. And then we have Max and Peter who are on the swim team and got a high placement at one of their meets. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have set a study topic tonight. First one is our ELA SLA curriculum adoption selection presentation. So Tanya Deacon.
Good evening. My name's Tanya Deacon. I'm Director of Curriculum and Student Learning, and with me tonight is Lupe Ricconi, Director of Multilingual. Is it close enough?
You got it.
Okay, very good. We're here tonight to talk about our ELA SLA materials that we've been looking at for the last several months now with staff. We wanted to share some of the choices that we've made and some of the choices yet to come. All right. We went ahead and included within the packet a timeline so that you could see when work had begun in earnest to move towards a new curriculum. So this started back in April. Our teachers have been working on looking at our priority standards, making sure that they were still current with the work that we're doing with our students and the different pieces that we use to assess their learning and how we can move forward. We've also spent some time talking about student learning, talking about assessment as far as should it be something that we create ourselves that's aligned to our standards? Should it be something that's provided by a company? Should we find a nice blend? There have been a lot of conversations. Kelly Toomey from Kelly Toomey Consulting has been working with us as far as helping us drive the conversations that sometimes can be difficult because we have some of our lessons that we love. We've done them. They're a lot of fun, but we have to make sure that they're also curricularly aligned. And there, there's no reason why you can't have both of those. So the first piece on literacy materials review, we wanted to make sure as a team that we outlined our why, we were looking to see what can we purchase, what might be available for us that would meet the needs of our established classroom teachers and our long-term substitutes. So it's a challenge to determine what might work best in two very different situations. We've also been following the literacy plan developed by ISB, and that was released about a week and a half ago. So if you have time, I'm going to take a look at that. I believe it ended up somewhere around a hundred and ninety-plus pages. Yes. And so it's, it's not a light, quick, easy read, but one of the pieces that you'll take away as you look through that material is there is a heavy focus on the science of reading. And I've done ESTER grants in the past year for the district. So when I first came in, one of the priorities the district had established was moving some of our staff members through a two-year training on the science of reading. So we have fifteen to twenty teachers within our district that have done some extensive training, and they're able to look at the materials that we were selecting for review with that critical eye. On the next page, we talk about materials and they moved around. One of the ideas that was presented, could we have the materials move around the district so that the teachers can look at it within their buildings? The warehouse was phenomenal. Thank you, Randy and your team, for helping us keep those moving between e-learning days and long weekends and some breaks. We were able to get the materials out to most of the buildings before we had to make our decision. One of our schools, Dr. Williams, as we know, is designated intensive. One of the first questions that the state asked us is what is our reading curriculum? And at that time, we didn't have one that we could share. So they did ask us to kind of move along with that. So one of the perhaps disadvantages was we did not get to pilot a lot within our classrooms, but we did have the materials out there for teachers to look at. So December fourth, we actually had HMH come to the district and do a presentation for us. Several of our members of our committee were in that meeting as well as the one the following week. We also had administrators that had joined us for those presentations and could provide feedback. As the materials moved around, we were pleased to see that with the information that came back to us through the form, it represented teachers, long-term subs, we had a board member, we had administrators, families, and community members. So while the, I believe we had thirty-nine or forty responses altogether, there was a lot of variation in where the feedback came from. So as we look ahead, some of the feedback that we had received last year as we did the math adoption was training, training, training. They loved that it was offered in the evenings, sometimes during the workday, Saturdays in the summertime, again in August, different times a day in different formats. Sometimes it was via Zoom, sometimes it was in person. We were able to get almost every employee in the district trained. You know, there are a few that it just didn't line up quite right, but we've had people work in the buildings with them to be able to keep them up to date and keep moving forward. So in that same vein, we want to go ahead and work on our training of science of reading. We have science of reading training at our Winter Institute next Friday for grade six through twelve. So they will get to jump in at that point. We also have, I think it's June second, training for our administrators here in the district, June third, to be able to go over science of reading from an administrator's perspective and how they can best support staff as we make these moves. We also will have training on the use of the materials. That's been essential. That also has to be provided not just for the classroom teacher, but for the administrators that are in the building so that they can help support the teachers as they're implementing new programs. We had to also take a look at, as we purchased a new curriculum, how many minutes are we providing instruction in that content area? And that's something that I'm not sure we've always followed along closely with. It will be important as we embark on any new curriculum. We also need to have SLA training and co-teaching training with our staff to make sure that we're learning how to best offset our talents and skills within the classroom to reach more kids. We also would like to get ourselves aligned to a progress monitoring tool. This is something that we would use every two to three weeks to check on student progress to help make instructional decisions in the classroom and determine what our students need and how do we adapt. We also need to continue to work on our multi-tier systems of support using that data again to make the instructional decisions that will support our students. We also need to make sure that we're given a little bit of attention and time to science and social studies. It's very important to the kids. It's very important to the staff. Either curriculum has nonfiction options within it that we would need to sit down and explore to see how the curriculum we've been developing can align with the work that we're doing within our literacy programs. Then as we gave this presentation, you may have already heard most of this, but no one curriculum is going to meet all our needs. We knew that right out of the gate. So as we took a look at the materials that were being offered, trying to make our best decisions as to what is going to help us get the job done. K-5 selection needs to be sent to ISB by the end of January, so we were able to get that information sent off to Dr. Combs. We need to come together and make sure that we're focusing on our student needs. Where is the learning struggling and how do we move it forward? The needed materials need to have a commitment, just like with math, we committed to seven years to make sure that we have that three-year time where teachers are getting familiar with the material and learning how to best reach kids. For this program, we're recommending five years simply because we don't want math and ELA to have to land in the same window for purchasing the materials and making changes. We need to maximize our community partnerships. We work with I Read, I Count. We work in our after-school programs with Anita Purvis, with Park District itself overall. What can we be doing with these partners to be able to move ourselves forward? Then all supplemental materials and subscriptions that we're using right now, we need to take a good, hard look at them and decide what is aligned to the work that we're trying to do. I don't want to call things distractions, but sometimes we're losing instructional time because we have a favorite software we like our kids to work in. We want them to have fun. There's nothing wrong with that, but making sure it's good, solid educational fun when they're sitting down and doing the work. So at this time, we have selected for K through five, English Language Arts to adopt Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, CKLA is how people refer to it. We also selected for K-5 SLA, Amplify Caminos. The teachers' feedback when they were giving us the surveys was that they need something. That was the most prominent option as they gave us feedback, which ones they both have pros and cons. What they did say was important is that ELA and SLA need to come from the same publisher because if we want to be able to have some fluidity with our kids, it kind of has to come from the same point of view. Six through eight ELA, we decided to go with HMH products. Part of it is we can have a little bit of a reach down to lower grade material to help move our kids forward, and it would not be duplicating what they've already seen. There's also some really great novel and genre experiences that are built into that curriculum. At this time, we're still reviewing six through twelve SLA, and we're still reviewing nine through twelve ELA. They're very different from looking at ELA curriculum. Those choices didn't have the January deadline that we were working under for our K-5. And we do hope, well, we plan to have a decision at the latest by next week, February fourteenth. We picked Valentine's Day for the love, but we love to have a decision. So some of the decisions might happen earlier. And what we've really been trying to do is just be transparent with the information, get it into people's hands so they can take a look at it. Did you have anything to add? Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Sheri.
Just, I saw the materials, but when you talked about the hundred and ninety-page document, what is that and where can it be found? What's included in there?
It is on ISB's website.
Okay.
I find if I just go to Google, type in ISB plus literacy plan, pulls it right up for you.
Are those skills through, from kindergarten through six that that encompasses or what is in the hundred and ninety pages?
It is not a mandate on what we're supposed to do. That is something that every meeting that I go to, that's the first thing they say, that we aren't going to tell you what to use. But it spends a lot of time in the report talking about science of reading concepts and how important phonics-based learning in K through two is to the students. And that was something that when you put the two side by side, the phonics-based instruction was far more prevalent. I'm a math person, but I could see it that way with our K through two than when we looked at it with HMH. And, and they did share, HMH said that it's not as strong as they would like it to be, but we need something now. So waiting another year or two for that to catch up wasn't really in the cards.
Okay, thank you.
So that document, just to elaborate, includes recommended professional development, recommended resources and research to look at. It actually came out of many years of work that was initiated by, I'm sure, looking at Dr. Everett Tatum, which there was a Senate bill, a House bill, that kind of led to that work in multiple different committees that Illinois then had to go through all these steps in order to develop a plan for literacy improvement across the state. It also includes recommendations for how to support students with special needs and students that are multilingual learners as well.
So I have a question with regards to a financial question. I mean, so what is the, especially the case five program going to cost? How does it compare to what we currently subscribe to, et cetera?
Right now, we don't have a subscription to any one core curriculum. So what we, what I'm proposing, I guess, would be with our ESTER funds that we're making the big purchase that we can right now with those monies because that's what it's intended to help with is learning loss. It is over nine hundred thousand dollars for five years of materials, Amplify, K-5, and Caminos. So it's both for those programs. They are still working on quotes for me for DIBELS, which is a progress monitoring tool that aligns to the programming itself. And then there's also M-Class. It's an intervention program that can be used to support some of our tier-two and tier-three students within classroom centers, things that we're doing that way. Those pieces are still coming back right now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Robbie.
So can you go back to the last slide just so I say the names correctly? Thank you. That one.
Sorry, John.
Oh, it's one of those in between. All right. So my question is, when we were talking about, you know, the math curriculum a while ago, six months ago or something, one of the pros mentioned was having the same program across all the grades, so that way you're not changing in the middle or whatnot. But here clearly it seems like Amplify, K-5, and HMH is the other program. So I mean, what is the advantage of mixing it up versus the other? Because in the math, it was like do it all the same way so that no one's being confused. And here it's kind of mixing it up.
It is mixing it up. It is. And part of the advantage to doing that is to get us through these next couple of years where we're still trying to get our kids to be performing at grade level and having the resources to grab. While it's brand new, we probably could have grabbed some Amplify stuff out of the K through five to use at the middle school. The Amplify folks, they had mentioned that they, their middle school program was not as strong as it needed to be. And when we sat and looked at the materials from that perspective, that is kind of how it played out for us. One of the things that came from the middle school, their concerns for their EL students, they've had a lot of students, newcomers move into their building. The EL, there is a specific EL piece within HMH. Amplify really believes in going back to that core of phonics base and moving forward, but when they're coming into the country, correct me if I get any of this wrong, when they're coming into the country, they have to learn fast. It has to be a little bit quicker, needs to be more structured, needs to have flow. And so that was kind of why we decided it would be okay. I know we had discussions early on that we wanted to stick with something that would go K through twelve if that were at all possible. Amplify only goes K eight because when you get into the high school standards, you've got the bands of nine, ten, eleven, twelve, all of the little courses. And Amplify only goes K-8, because when you get into the high school standards, you've got the bands of nine, ten, eleven, twelve, all of the little courses. And HMH itself does go K through twelve, but it takes on very different pieces. So even within HMH, there's into reading, there's into literature, into writing, and making those pieces match up with what we think our kids need and how we can help staff to move that forward. I, my own personal opinion is HMH is a bit more user-friendly in a step-by-step process. And having watched our middle school with long-term subs struggle, having something that can move them forward in a more structured way, I think would be helpful.
Thank you. It's great questions. Anybody else?
Yes. You go ahead. Spanish is more readily available with the HMH program as well.
Sorry. For the middle school, the offerings in Spanish were more limited than they were at elementary. So the secondary team and Dr. Weemel actually looked at, are currently in the process of reviewing two completely different curriculums that align better with the Spanish language standards at the middle school and the high school level.
That's been a tough one to address, but we want to make that commitment.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for this enlightening presentation. Our last study topic tonight is the sixth-grade center schematic design. Scott.
Yeah, good evening. Go ahead and get started here while passing those out. We're here for the schematic design review. That's kind of our first phase of design. And then we kind of move into design development and then construction documents as we move through our design. The first slide here is just the existing site aerial. Gives you a little feel for where the existing building is. It's kind of pushed to the east side of the existing site. North is to your left on that, that plan. Florida Avenue to the right, Pennsylvania to the left. And you can see we've got quite a bit of grass area out in front of the existing school on the west side. Moving to the next slide, this would be our proposed site plan. The bulk of our addition is on the west side of the existing building. You can see we've, you've already approved some solar improvements and re-roofing of the existing building, which is reflected there. On the proposed site, we're creating a new drop-off drive on the west. That'll come off of Anderson. The existing parking off of Anderson and Pennsylvania will remain. And the flow would be, I think, down Anderson and then into that drop-off drive, and then back out to Anderson. The, the bus drive on the east side would remain basically as-is. That would serve our yellow buses to the school. And we're proposing a new MTD drop-off off of Florida Avenue. Still in the process of reviewing that with MTD and, and the city. Just to see how many buses we really need to stack up there at drop-off and pickup. Proposing keeping the existing asphalt basketball areas, again, for the sixth-grade use, and a potential new soccer field and kind of walking track around that field to support the PE program. And this parking is a little over a hundred for the site with the added spaces on the drop-off drive. So we think that will adequately support the school. It's well beyond what is required by zoning, but we've always provided more than the minimum zoning requirement. Onto the next plan is the, the basic floor plan. The green is the new addition. And then the combination of the purple and blue is the existing building. And the, the purple is the basic team teaching spaces. So you can see we're reusing a lot of those existing classrooms for the, for our new classrooms. And then the, the light blue is the more kind of support spaces. And we're taking the existing gymnasium, making that cafeteria multipurpose space. Renovating the existing kitchen to serve that cafeteria. The other blue spaces are restrooms and other student support spaces, social work, sensory room, some of those type of spaces. Kind of moving into the addition. New entry on the, the west side, off of that drop-off drive. Be a secure vestibule there with entrance directly into the office and then screening there for visitors, and they would then be able to proceed into the existing, or the building. That main office would include the sixth-grade administrator, couple secretarial spaces, and then directly off of that is a conference room, administrative conference room, workroom, copy and mails is all in that area right there by the main entrance. And then moving to the east, there are quite a few support spaces for faculty. Faculty lounge, an additional meeting space, a phone room, and then some custodian and other support spaces, SRO office in that area. Additional spaces in the addition include a new gymnasium, which was one of our main items. We wanted to separate that out so we don't have a cafeteria that also has to be a gym. So new gymnasium with bleacher seating for two fifty to three hundred, and a new stage off of that gymnasium with support spaces, storage, we'll have locker rooms, which will be sized primarily for team sports, not really for PE. I think they decided they probably wouldn't dress for sixth-grade PE at this point. And then some additional support spaces, PE office, storage, and a water room there. And that, that area there will be our storm shelter. So we have to be able to, you know, evacuate everybody in the building into that space and, and keep them safe in the event of a tornado. So that's designed for two hundred and fifty mile an hour winds, and it'll stay there while the rest of the building blows away, so. And that's a new code requirement that we have to, we have to do that, so. Kind of moving to the right on this plan, at the corner there is the library. We've kind of tried to make that a little bit of a feature and kind of addressed Florida Avenue, you know, as, as a nice view of the school. Create a feature there. And then there's a media tech and a band and orchestra classroom and choir classroom. And generally, the existing building is about a little over forty-two thousand gross square feet, and our addition is a little over thirty. So, right around the seventy-two, seventy-three square feet, thousand square feet total. Any questions on the kind of basic building plan? Yep, yep.
So a question that comes up. So on these doors that are coming in, like that main door from the west parking lot, is that just two single doors there, or is that like, I mean, it's, all right. And then, I ask that in part because a question that has come up via email to me had to do with the entryways and the throughput. You know, potentially not now, but forward-thinking to if you have to install metal detectors and such in the future. You know, is that bottlenecking if you come in just that door with two doors and the one at the bus drive? Maybe, maybe not, but also if that is the case, are they, you know, fitting them out now for electrical outlets on the walls and then the floors? So that way, you can easily put them in in the future if you needed to.
That's a good point. We would, we would definitely want to do that. And I think, I mean, this isn't the, the middle school, so, I mean, I think middle school main entrance has four doors. And we're, you know, a third of that, so I think two for the main entry is probably reasonable. We definitely look at, you know, the occupancy and then size each of the entrances primarily for exiting, you know, for getting out in a fire, but I think it also kind of serves for entrance as well.
All these metal detector options seem to have like a, a place you walk through and then a place on the side where people do a more thorough check or they look through your bag or something. And if it's just a little skinny hallway, you know, I don't know if you need more of a foyer kind of entryway where you can put that secondary spot there or not.
Yeah, actually, we were just talking today about maybe that main lobby area needs to be a little wider. It's about ten feet now, so we were talking about twelve or fourteen, so that might be a good idea. That would allow for that additional space for metal detectors if we needed them in the future.
Someone has some other comment on that. I was just gonna ask, what is the media tech mean? Is that like the industrial art move or no?
The librarian might dual teach that as a media course.
Like a computer lab, kind of?
No, not a computer lab. More of a just IT instructional tech person. Like that would be a space where they would do some of that library instruction, but more from a tech lens, not just, you know, at the elementary level, library instruction is very grounded in teaching kids about books and about different genres and things like that. But at this level, it's, it get, it is getting a lot deeper into library instruction areas. So the teacher would be able to then use that classroom as a teaching classroom.
And I think many of the elementaries have included something similar to like an indoor space. Education and technology.
Yeah, and that, that space was also dual-use for health classroom as well.
So I was wondering on the, in the multipurpose in that section, if, if there were any thoughts about the very large storage section actually being a stage as a portion of that to give a second space to have some staging outside of having to use the gym all the time so that if you had an event going on or wanted to have an event and there's like a basketball game or practice going on in the gym, that there would be an opportunity somewhere else to have some stage space.
I mean, we've definitely talked about having like a, a large screen and projector in there. I think maybe with some doors, we could maybe accommodate a smaller stage, maybe, as an option.
Yeah, just a thought.
Yeah. Good thought.
Or maybe a movable stage, like maybe we could like have risers that we put up and take down or something like that, that we can store in that big closet.
Yeah, and we were talking about risers for choir too, so. That might be something that could dual-use that, yeah. Good thought.
Any other questions?
Kind of go on to the next slide is an aerial view from the exterior. So.
No, sorry. But please email us and we can follow up.
So the bulk of the addition is kind of going to match the height and character of the existing building. But then as we come into the gym and the stage and the library, we've kind of, those need to be a little taller spaces. And also, we want to just call out that library on the corner and also kind of the main entrance there. So we've put a sloped roof on those spaces to help call those out a little bit. And on to the next slide is a view of kind of the main entrance from the northwest. Kind of trying to relate this back a little bit to the Urbana Middle School. So we've got the, a canopy that is similar to we see at the Urbana Middle School, but a little smaller, kind of Urbana Middle School light here, so. And the sixth-grade center there. The exterior would be primarily brick to match the existing building, again, to tie it all together. Next slide is the aerial view from the southwest. You can see that drop-off drive and the canopy and the library there in the corner. And you can see the existing building in the background. And then the next is perspective view from the southwest, kind of focusing there on the library with the stage and the gym in the background there. So project timeline, we're through schematic design. We're moving into design development. We anticipate, you know, mid-March, your nineteenth board meeting maybe coming back to give you an update. And then, construction documents then would follow and anticipating having bids come back to the board early June, June fourth. And then we would move into the, that's when we get bids from the contractor, we move into construction, you know, starting in June. And about thirteen months of construction to get that done in time for fall twenty twenty-five. And that's a little quicker than we've done before, but we think with the building empty, we can, we can get that done. And the next slide is the project budget. We've got a little more detail, so we're a little more confident on our estimates. We'll be getting in much more detail in this next phase, design development. We're still around that twenty-four million, which I know we'd like to bring that down a little bit if we can, and we'll definitely be working on that to try and get that reduced down. And that's, that's the total project. The actual construction is around nineteen, so.
I have a quick question here.
Yeah.
So one of the things that's, that's concerning me a little bit is the fact that it's a, the building was built in nineteen fifty-five, and our design, or our construction contingency is only seven point five percent. I mean, is there, is that going to be big enough? I mean, I know that, you know, back when LEO was done, I think they had a ten percent contingency that they went well past, adding on to an old building.
With the abatement that's happened, we've actually got a really good idea of what's there. And, and frankly, these estimates are kind of based on pretty much a gut and redo. You know, the water piping is old galvanized pipe, so we're gonna have to redo all of that. And, you know, all the flooring is gone, most of the ceilings are gone. So we're really redoing everything. So I think that, hope, that should reduce our risk on this, you know, needing a larger contingency. We kind of based that on ten percent for the remodeling piece and a five percent on the new piece. Less, less unknowns on that new piece of construction, so. That's kind of why we kind of land on that seven and a half percent, so.
And I think to Paul's point, we, the building is really gutted. I mean, there's nothing there but walls. Like, so, a lot of times when we get into the bones of the building is when we have surprises and we have to dip into our contingency because we pull back a wall or something. It's full of asbestos and, you know, little things like that. But because they've taken out all the toilets, like all the plumbing, like there's so many things that have already been removed. The, the potential for surprises is really, really small, at least in the existing part.
Yeah, that's, that's helped a lot. I mean, it's given us a lot of insight into what's there. Yeah, that's, that's helped a lot, I mean, it's given us a lot of insight into what's there and, and what we need to do to renovate it.
Thank you, that clears it up. Anyone else?
So, uh, when I was looking at those overhead pictures, the thing that caught my eye is, uh, you know, there's a lot of roof space. So, uh, has there, particularly as there's another topic coming up about energy, you know, energy saving things. Have we thought about maybe doing like what the park district's doing and renting if we cannot afford more solar panels all over those roofs?
Yeah, we've, we've already talked about designing that so that we can add roof, uh, solar panels, so.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, if we did a PPA, um, we wouldn't have to do it right at, at, at this point. If we, if we wanted to buy it ourselves, we would have to include it in the price of construction, build it out probably at the same time in order to be able to afford it. So it, it would, I guess it would depend on, on how much room we got in our. Bonding income to, to be able to afford it upfront, and I don't know, uh, that, you know, what, what that is at the moment, but we'd have to ask.
Do you, I mean, you're not, you're talking about the solar panels that are in this picture?
No, those ones we already have.
Adding more, oh, okay.
On the new construction in particular.
Kind of like what we would be doing at the Aquatic Center.
Yep, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, we, we.
Now, whether, uh, we needed to budget that into this, and then if we don't have room to spend it, then we don't spend it, or. You know, more solar, the better, the way I look at it.
Yeah, I, I think if we had to go PPA, we decide, you know, what's happening, the Aquatic Center is acceptable, uh, in terms of our engagement going forward with solar. I think we'd want to probably bundle this leftover space with other buildings in the district to kind of probably get a better deal that way. Uh, the, by the more horizontal space we offer up, the, by the better deal we're going to get from a PPA group.
But yeah, we'll definitely build it to support adding solar in the future. And if our estimates come way down, we'll add it in.
This might be a good time to, John, if you could go to the slide that had the Urbana Middle School Sixth Grade Center on it, front facing, yeah. So we have been using, um, there were questions, um, from board members about naming, and so, um. From the very beginning of this project, we have really, um, I know the middle school team, our goal is to be transitioning students from here and over to the seventh grade. And, um, they would still be considered part of Urbana Middle School. These students would be going back and forth between the two buildings for like electives and special classes and maybe some acceleration activities. So the intention, um, from the very beginning was to, um, continue to have this building be an extension of the existing Urbana Middle School. But as was pointed out, we haven't officially named the building, the Urbana Middle School Sixth Grade Center. So if that is, if the, I mean, we've been calling it that for over a year, um, but we could, uh, I could engage a small group. To officially recommend that as the name, or if that group might come up with some other name. That we could bring back to the board if the board so wishes us to actually, um, go through that process. But I know the, um, intention for all the folks at the middle school is that we are building a, this is a, um, community of learners. And just because they're in this building, uh, these kids will be interacting a lot with, um, students maybe from some sports activities, maybe enrichment activities. I know they, they definitely still want the sixth grade, uh, students participating in some of those higher level band and strings things. And so, uh, it, it was, I think it's really important to the staff that we continue to call it, um, the Sixth Grade Center as connected to Urbana Middle School. But we can officially, um, have that conversation and bring that as a recommendation back to the board.
So the, the, if you look through your board policy manuals, the official process is that the board would direct the superintendent administration to put together a naming committee to. Find an appropriate name for, for a place. Or to change a name of an existing place, I think both of which would qualify for this. I think it's probably a good idea that we follow through with our process if we wish to, to make a change or not, that's, that's be a, a board decision later on after the committee. Comes up with a, with, with, with a name, but I, regardless of, of what the committee decides, personally, I think we should. Still honor Flossie Wiley for her service to this district in, in, in a very significant fashion.
Want us, okay, to, uh, look, I can go back to the group and we already have a working committee. I am not going, I, I don't see the need to go out and find another committee to do this because, again, there are many of us that are working. Lots of hours on behalf of the district, including our teachers who, we have a large group of folks who are part of this committee already, who meet every, every month, basically, uh, with Scott. So, I mean, I think we could go back to that group and, um, have a discussion about naming.
Yeah.
So Paul, were you thinking like something inside the building maybe as a, like the Flossie Wiley Library or something like that?
Well, I would, I would, I mean, that's why we have a naming committee, it's, it's, um.
Well, it doesn't work like that for that kind of, like a memorial thing, someone would have to, uh, uh, submit a formal letter. Some, we would have to have signatures saying we would like to name something within the building maybe after Flossie Wiley. I mean, we don't, we don't have that, so if there are people listening who would like to do that, then we would need that process to, uh, be generated in terms of to name the building after a person.
Sure, that makes sense.
Or name pieces of the building after a person.
I'm just, I'm thinking back to when we renamed Prairie to be Dr. Williams School. I mean, we, we still wanted to honor the history of Prairie School and what we ended up doing at that point in time. Was renaming the entire campus that contained the Early Childhood Center and Dr. Williams as the Prairie Campus.
Yes.
And we kept the signage. I think we should try to think out of the box and, and do something significant to, to honor the history of Wiley School and, and of Flossie Wiley herself.
Well, if there's someone listening who would like to make a recommendation and send in a formal letter to, uh, start that process, then we can do that. I meant for the Flossie Wiley part, yeah. About this, would this be a good time for, since Scott is already at the microphone? And I did, uh, ask Lupe earlier if she would stay for a few minutes in case there were questions. So I know, uh, we heard a lot of public comment tonight about, um, why, again, like just to kind of revisit again, the conversations that we've had around. Why we did not, um, have the dual language school in, in, um, Wiley to begin with. So we, we had all those conversations, um, but it's been a long time, so it's probably a good idea to revisit that. So I know one of the board members asked if we could actually just talk about that. And then based on comments that we heard tonight, it definitely is something that I think, um, people who are, um. Talking a lot about their building possibly becoming the new dual language site are saying, hey, let's, let's talk about this again. So, um, I don't know if, we did not have time to put together a presentation, so again, it was a pretty quick turnaround. So just to revisit some of the things that we've talked about. So John, if you want to go back to like the site view of the building, the internal phones, not that one, the one that shows all the classrooms. Okay, yep. So yeah, so I think in our initial conversations, remember the purple is the, um, is the existing building. So if you recall, very early on, um, or as we've talked about Wiley, Wiley was a two-strand elementary school, which means there was two of every grade level. Um, and then there were a couple of classes that, uh, were not used as a classroom. Then we had, uh, fine art spaces that were shared. So our initial conversations in the facilities planning committee, when we talked about, um. Wiley and there were lots of conversations about would the dual language program fit in the existing building? And at, at that point, there was a lot of evidence as to that it would not. So, um, we are planning for 450 students, um, Wiley typically had around 200. So the existing school as it, as it is constructed, um, would not have been big enough for, uh, Spanish dual language. I think our initial estimate was we would have had to add eight to 10 classrooms. Just to make the building big enough to house the dual language program. And then also to, uh, provide the dual language program, the same amenities and the same, um, level of, uh, renovation that the other schools have. Had in terms of a dedicated fine art space, um, a new gym, a multipurpose room. You know, new, just the, uh, kind of redo and, uh, facelift that the other buildings got when they were renovated. We determined that that was well outside of the scope of what our budget would allow us to do. I know Katie's talked a lot about, um, the bonds and the, uh, funding source that we have right now to pay for this project. So to add eight to 10 classrooms to this project and to be able to bring it up to the same level as what our other elementary schools. So one, there's a financial, um, component to that, we just, we don't have enough funding to do that. I don't remember how much it costs, Scott, the eight, just the eight to 10 classrooms alone. I mean, I know I didn't ask you this in advance, sorry. But just adding eight to 10 classrooms by just, to this current site, I don't know if you have in your mind, like how, roughly how much that would.
I mean, I don't know, that would be hugely different than the Sixth Grade Center, but, I mean, it wouldn't address other issues, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you just. Turned this into a multilingual school, I mean, it's probably similar scope, I'm guessing.
So just in terms of the classroom, so I guess it would be around 24 billion, same amount of money.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, that was our initial conversation in terms of, um, just having the number of classrooms that we would need to have for the dual language program. We'd have to add quite a few classrooms, uh, to this space, so. I can't think of other. Comments, um, oh, I know, uh, the other things that we talked about is the fact if we move 450 students out of our, um, Dr. Williams Building and, uh. LEO Building and put them in another space, and we've spent significant money and, uh, resources in the last 10 years. To add to Yankee Ridge and Thomas Payne, um, to accommodate growth at the elementary level, that really hasn't happened. So our elementary enrollment is flat. Our enrollment analysis that we, um, we had last meeting from RSP. She basically confirmed that from all of their, uh, demographic and forecasting information that they shared, that our elementary population isn't forecast, um, to grow. So pulling, spending $24 million to pull students out of existing spaces and then generating empty classrooms in other buildings. Probably isn't the best use of our funding when we have our middle school, um, that one is overcrowded and that is experiencing very significant, um, needs right now. And the fact that our demographer, uh, the demographer report that they also shared said the only grades, the only, uh, level in our district that really is going to be growing is our middle school. So they talked about that on the, on the cohort student change level, um, and then the projected enrollment slides that they shared last time. They actually projected that in a couple of years, our middle school will be over a thousand students. So, um, I think having the Sixth Grade Center is going to really benefit us in terms of being able to separate out that growing, uh, group. And be able to put them in, um, a more, uh, a space that we can really, uh, focus on their needs. The scope of this was about 325 students is what this concept is kind of getting us right here. And if we were going to try to have 450 here, we would be adding some more classrooms. I don't know if anybody else, if you had specific questions about, um, utilizing Wiley, I know we talked about it in some of our earlier conversations, so. Okay.
All right, uh, any, that's it for, for this presentation, thank you very much, Scott. We have three administration, administrative reports tonight. First up is a review of a dicentennial tenure health, life, safety survey and timeline for its reassessment, um, that's Randy.
And Scott's going to stay at the table because we work with IGW to do the safety survey reports, so.
Thanks for, thanks for pulling double duty tonight, Scott.
No problem.
This is our facilities night, so he's all in.
So IGW prepares a 10-year safety report for Bannock Schools in conformance with the Illinois School Code. Illinois Admin Code and Public Schools Health Life Safety. The report includes maps, uh, facilities maps, locations, uh, school boundaries, descriptions of existing conditions. And an updated, uh, safety reference plan for each school. Uh, the 10-year survey comes with a recommendation of schedules and estimated cost for each item. District staff and I will work with IGW to come up with a 10-year plan, once it's poured by, approved by the board. Then the report is then shared with ISB, um, the Illinois State Board of Education, and the, uh, then it's reviewed by the regional superintendent and state superintendent for final approval. For each school, uh, every violation is broken down into like, um, different classes, like general work, plumbing, electrical and HVAC. Then they get labeled as, uh, urgent, required or recommended. Examples of these items found on the list are like tuck pointing, door entries, uh, classroom doors, stair treads, flooring, restroom remodels. Upgraded exit lighting, uh, windows, um, roofs, making things more accessible, like moving a, maybe a fire alarm pole station. Univents, uh, lighting, mechanicals, mechanical spaces, um, and like, uh, glass door panels. Scott, you have anything to add to the process?
Yeah, just when we go through the buildings, we kind of identify items and we sit down with Randy and review those. And break them into those categories, kind of urgent is kind of life safety stuff like fire alarms, you know, exit signs, emergency lighting, that kind of stuff. Required is replacement of boilers, um, you know, equipment that is, is going bad. And then the recommended are just not code requirements, but things that we would recommend doing and you get into like pavement replacement. With energy efficiency, uh, accessibility improvements, those are all, would fall under recommended items. And you can't do any recommended items until you finish all the urgent and required. And the urgent, you're supposed to do in one year from the date you publish the report. The required in five years and then recommended after that, so. And from the last 10-year safety survey, we've completed all the urgent required. And addressed some of the recommended as, as needed and then there's all the stuff that comes up outside of that, that we want to use HLS funds for, so. We usually run out of money before we run out of things to do, so.
So, um, we, you, you have a one-pager that is kind of the overview of our next 10-year survey. So the board, um, is kind of required to do this part, so we wanted to have this conversation so we can kind of begin the next 10-year, um, safety survey process, so. Randy and Scott want to talk about that part.
Yeah, generally we would, um, I think the last one was actually submitted in January 2015, approved, I think maybe in March, if I remember right. So we were anticipating probably starting that this summer. It's nice for us to walk through the buildings, you know, and they're not disrupting classes and stuff during the summer, so. We'd probably do that inspection during the summer, sit down with Randy and review that, and then, you know, come back to the board shortly after that to get that approved. And submit late this year or early next year. General timeline.
First step is hiring our architect to do that, so I'm, I'm assuming the board. First step is hiring our architect to do that, so I'm, I'm assuming the board, since Scott will already be working on another project for us. Um, has no problem with us continuing to have IGW um kind of help assist us and guide us in this process. Which is the very first process is to kinda have our architect uh go through and review and prioritize um all of our facilities to kinda get this process going, so. Yep.
And we would hire a mechanical electrical engineer, probably GHR engineers, um, to help us with that.
Thank you, Scott. And Randy, any, any questions from the board or our student ambassador? All right, all right, yeah, thanks guys. Our second administrative report tonight is our long-term facility project discussion.
Is it okay if I take the lead on this?
Please do.
All right, so uh, the reason we're bringing this topic to you tonight is because there was multiple requests back in August when we first convened the board uh to review our overall facilities planning processes with the board. So it was really helpful that um Scott was here tonight to talk about the ten-year survey. It's gonna kinda lead into another discussion topic that I believe Ben, uh, member Baxley uh requested regarding energy management. And so all of those things combined tonight, we're just bringing you like everything about facilities that we can, so. Just a little intro there, but the two documents that I'm gonna be reviewing with the board are um working documents. They constantly change as um factors change that affect them. Um, so the snapshot that you're seeing might be different a month from now, but I wanted to walk through that process. These same documents were reviewed uh with the facilities committee in December, so. These are documents that that smaller working group reviews more on a regular basis. But I wanted the full board to kind of understand what that process looks like and also to give your feedback and weigh in on um especially the prioritize list. So I would like to start, first of all, just kinda with the general overview of the document that uh John has on the screen for us of the capital funding sources. So I know it looks a little busy with everything going on here, but really the column headings are what are driving the different funding sources that we have available for facility improvements. So you've got your facility sales tax, um, which can use, be used directly to do facility improvements, which is what we would call pay-as-you-go projects. Or you can issue bonds and use those sales tax dollars um to pay off those debt payments if you need to do a larger project, so that you need the capital upfront to do a major construction project. And then over time, you would pay those back using a portion of the sales tax dollars. So that um is taken in, both of those um payments, whether it be bonds or pay-as-you-go, are taken into effect in that column as far as the expenses that are coming out when you're kinda looking at the projection over time in that column as you read down the column. The next source over would be life safety funding. And this is gonna be those things, for example, that Scott mentioned in the ten-year survey that um you're allowed to use life safety funding to address. That's a separate tax levy. It's a small tax levy that we levy every year. Um, it, it can't necessarily pay for all of the improvements um that need to be done, but it is a source we're allowed to use, so if the needs um and expenses exceed that funding source, we would have to go to other sources to complete those urgent or required projects. But it is a source that we're allowed to use for those specific projects. And then um, uh, then alternative revenue source bonds, those would be those larger bond issues that we would issue for those major projects. Everything that's after that dark um gray column or green column on the screen is what we would call those rolling working cash bonds that uh Randy primarily is using for summer projects and that we use for a million of for um ongoing instructional technology improvements. So you can't look exactly at that as being a source for these kind of long-term facility prioritized projects. On the smaller level you can, but on the larger level you can't, cuz if they're smaller and we can tick them off as a summer project, that's a source we can look at to do some of our capital improvements. That's why this is kind of a comprehensive look at um all of those different funding sources. So you can kinda understand what your total dollars available are in each of those buckets, cuz you can't always use the dollars available for the specific project. If it doesn't meet the requirements for life safety funds, you can't turn to that source. But if it does meet the requirements, then you can look and see how much you have available in that source and potentially choose to use that. So that's the overall look at um how this document works. What um figures we have plugged into this right now. You can see the ending balances of the prior fiscal year are kinda that first line across the top that ends in twenty-four million over on the far right. Um, so that's how much we had in our fund balances of these funds in total at the end of last fiscal year, our last audited fiscal year. Um, and then from there, this is all of the budgeted revenues and expenditures in that next section that are supposed to happen during the year we're in right now. We're about halfway through that year. And so all of the revenue sources and then all of the expenditure sources, and then if you look again at the far right, you see that ending balance, we're projecting budgeted ending balance of fifteen million, fifteen point eight million. That would still be available for projects. Then from there, the next estimate is just additional revenues and or expenditures that would happen in the coming fiscal year that we're projecting outward. And you can see then at the end of all of those projects, we would be looking at ending balances around four point eight million. And so that's the way that these capital budgets go. There's a lot of big swings, cuz you issue bonds, you have high balances and then you spend them down on all of the projects, because really with all of these sources, the goal is to spend all of the money on your buildings. So you shouldn't really be like accumulating a lot of funding here because you're trying to spend it on improving your buildings. But there is a lot of up and down in these balances as you complete projects and then as you're gearing up for the next round of projects. If that makes sense. So um some of the estimates and projections that we have in here was issuing a twenty million in alternative revenue source bonds, which we originally were anticipating issuing in January and closing in early February. But with some of the adjusted timelines that Scott has presented in um November, I believe, and then again tonight, um, we're actually gonna shoot for issuing those bonds in August or September closer to the start of the actual construction project when we need that money. There's no reason to issue it now. Um, and also, you know, until we actually have bids, we don't wanna issue money without actually knowing how much we need. So um, since those construction timelines have just changed a little bit, I didn't wanna put the cart before the horse and issue any bonds when we weren't ready. So that actually won't happen. Um, and then we'll roll that into next year's budget, so you won't see any revenue for, from bond proceeds in this fiscal year. It'll wind up being a budget for next fiscal year. So, um, that's a change that I'm excited to tell you guys about tonight. That's a change in our budget and um what we anticipate. So, and then to offset that, the original expectation was that about half of the construction would be done in this fiscal year and half in next fiscal year, when in reality, we are doing all of the asbestos abatement and um a lot of the preliminary planning and things like that, but we can pay for those out of the sales tax funds that we have available. So we won't need those bond funds until we start construction in the fall and then all of that spending we expect to happen before August twenty-five. And that's how we'll budget. So that's kind of um the overview of this document. I, I wanna move on to the other document too, so you can kind of understand the full picture of how those pieces fit together. But I'd be happy to entertain questions about anything specific on this document or how this document works before we move to the second document.
Board members, any questions on uh capital expenditure financing on this table? I think we're good.
We can circle back to it too, so. All right, so the other document I just wanna give another overview of is this list of prioritized projects. So typically, our list of prioritized projects in general comes from that ten-year safety survey. That's really helping drive the projects that we expect and need to accomplish in the coming ten-year period. But we've done them all. And so that's one of the reasons this list is rather short right now. Um, so as we gear up to um revisit the next ten-year survey, this list is gonna get a lot longer. Um, and the, what's remaining on this list are other priority, high priority projects that um our team or others in the district have uh pointed out, and that's again where I'm inviting all of you to help give input into um if you're out and about in our facilities, in our buildings, and you notice things or have ideas about needs, please bring those to um these meetings and discuss that so that we can continue to hone this list. Again, it's a, it's a working document um that we want to continue to work on and prioritize and as the items that are higher priority get accomplished, we can prioritize some of the lower priority things higher and get those done as well. But if it's not on the list, we don't really, you know, it's, it's not gonna get prioritized and get into that queue to make it into this document that kind of lays out the next couple of years' worth of planning. So it's important, like this is really the starting point. The list is the starting point that then feeds into actually getting the project funded. Um, and so with that, I, I didn't necessarily wanna go item by item on this list, but you can see that the list is structured by facility. There's a few items that I did wanna um talk about, uh, that we even have a couple of images that John can bring up when we get there. Um, but this is just a combination of things, mostly of items that Randy knows need to be done um in the near term, and we're trying to actively um find funding sources to get them accomplished. So, and we did review this list and we took input at the facilities team. We made some changes to it, made some additions to it, and all any changes that were recommended are on this list already. They've been updated. Um, so, uh, let me think what I wanted to talk about next. Oh, so with that, um, I mean, I think one of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight that was kind of on the list to talk about is the campus land use plan. This was a plan that was brought to the board in twenty nineteen. Um, an outside consultant put together this plan. Uh, there was about fourteen different phases of the plan or parts of the plan. And it totaled something like seventeen to twenty million dollars, and that was, you know, years ago, so those costs have only skyrocketed since with the current economic environment. So we have reviewed that plan and there are definitely aspects of it that we're very interested in, um, especially when it comes to um the parking and um roadway access to the site, uh, the middle school and high school site. And um, so we've added those to this prioritized list as highest priority um needs from that plan. But we didn't add the other items up on that, of, that are phased in uh at this time, so those are things we can consider adding in the future, but you can see the four point six five million dollar estimated north campus access and parking and the um UHS presence entryway at door one is on there as well. Do you wanna pull those up, John? The this is the actual slides from that plan. So this is the entry presence. I don't, you, I wasn't here then, but Dr. Iri Tatum, you might have a little bit more to say about why we felt this was a high priority that we wanted to keep.
I, I could speak to that too, cuz um it's involved in getting this together. There, there, there's a lot of this that's involved uh around student safety, both regards, regard to traffic flow and with regards to um making some changes to our entry on the north side of the building, adding a vest of yule. And um, and, you know, making the building a little, little bit safer. So a lot of it is that, there is, there's a big part of it that's the breeze way between the UMS and UHS as well, to try to utilize that space. It's kind of um not being utilized right now. The idea was to put in an enclosure there with, with, with big um uh doors that, that could be opened and closed and then having concrete seating in there, so that could be used for other purposes. Those, those, those are the biggest ticket items in all of this, and then a refurbishment of the, of the, of the baseball diamonds as, as well. There was talk at that point in time about adding uh like a fieldhouse uh space, but that was just a concept at the time. Um, I think, I think something that's, that's, that's been brought up since then that has, that has more traction lately uh in the community is the, expanding our um industrial art space instead. But um, that's, this, yeah, we paid a consultant, uh, some, I think between twenty and thirty thousand dollars to kinda help us come up with this. Um, the, that came out of the uh, the facilities committee, uh, community-wide, community, community's, facilities, facility review about eight or nine years ago.
Two thousand nine.
Yeah, two, uh, right, two thousand nine, wow. Uh, the recommendation at that point in time was to, was to study what could be done uh with this property now that we've uh, over the course of twenty-five years or so, acquired um most of the space north of Iowa Street.
So some of this we actually um did complete with our S R two funds.
Yes.
So if you remember when we were socially distancing at the high school, um, we created outside um hardscape spaces where students could have um eating, where they could be kinda separated, so we did, um, we used our S R two funds to um put in some concrete in front of the um building on um Race Street and then across the street, um, where those, on Iowa Street, there's some, also some other spaces. So John, if you go back to the UHS entry one, number nine.
Jennifer, we did the courtyards at the middle school too.
Yeah, we did, also did the courtyards at the middle school um as another area to allow students to be able to socially distance and eat. Um, so that's number one, those number ones and there are two.
That one.
So this one, I think Katie was saying, the reason we prioritize this and kept it on this list, even though this is from like two thousand nineteen, is uh we really do feel like the high school needs a front-facing entrance. Like right now, people go, they don't, they go to the Race Street door. They don't know which way, what, what is the front door. Um, the Iowa Street door is very hidden and unless you've been to UHS before, we've tried to do some things like putting um signage outside. Um, we have the big U cling on Iowa Street now. Um, we use door um nine in Tiger Lane, and so um right now, students have to go into Tiger Lane to um for the student attendance center, so if you're getting picked up for an appointment or you're late to school, um, it is a very, you know, you go to another whole part of the building to get a pass um to be able to in, enter the school. So bringing all of that into the um Iowa Street entrance was something that we really feel is a high priority. Um, so when you enter, when you arrive at UHS, you know exactly where you're supposed to go. Um, the attendance center is right there as you enter the building. We also have talked about the school-based health, health center is very close to this entrance. But right now, the only way you can enter the health center is also from a little tiny door in Tiger Lane, and so um by making this more of a real entry presence, uh, we would be able to um put way more of our um functional things that we need into a dedicated entrance. So we kept this on our list because we felt like this was a high priority. Um, and so, yeah, that's what you want me to kinda share.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
So um, really, I just wanted the full board to kind of experience, like this is how the sausage is made, right? Like, you can see on this prioritized list, like there's line items on here that don't have cost estimates yet. There's a lot of just like written notes um about, you know, timelines or when we hope to accomplish these things or ideas that we've had about how we might fund these projects. And this is like what we do at that facility committee level, where we really talk through these lists, try to figure out how to prioritize those things. Um, you know, we do give priority preference to things that are health, life, safety or related to student safety. Um, and, or if there's outside grant funding source or things like that, that we could he, help, help us prioritize those things higher um and get them accomplished. But I did want um the full board to kinda see this list. I wasn't really planning on going through it. However, if you'd like to go through any specific items you see, or if you'd like to have any uh further discussion, I, I welcome that now.
I'd just like to make one comment about this. And uh, you know, last spring, uh, a fourth grader, Leo broke his arm playing in the alley due to the horrible paving conditions, and I mentioned that in August, and Randy made it sound like it was happening any day once we got approval from the city, cuz it was in an alley, but that hasn't happened yet. That big hole is still there. I would consider that a safety issue, and it's also not in this list of things either. So is it off the radar now? Have you just given up on that alley?
It is on there. The um playground blacktop, it's on there.
It's not a playground.
Well, that's the item that's on there.
They play on it. It's a playground.
That's the item you're referring to, and it is on the list, so. And it's listed as high. And it doesn't include leveling the surfaces where that alley goes down and then goes back up. That's what the note is about.
All right, thank you. Uh, and any other questions or comments?
Katie, do we have the drive, um, kinda the little serpentine drive, I think we call it, that?
Are you talking about the campus land use?
Yes.
Yep, it's on, um, it's actually called North Campus Access Parking. If you wanna pull, John had it pulled up, but we can pull it up again.
Yeah, I think that one is a really important one to show, um, that we took from the campus land use um and put on here. Um, not so much the drive that goes all the way through to UMS, but more so, more so the piece where um we would, yeah, that section. So we've already kind of expanded the student parking. We uh made a gravel space back there for students. But um, if you've been to the high school at arrival or dismissal, um, it is uh very difficult to um exit on Iowa Street and make a left turn. Um, we've talked to the city about having um some different additional signage put out there where we can make this a one-way, going one-way or um having a light or something. We need to do um a traffic study probably there, but one way that we really feel like we can fix the congestion, especially after school, um, is to really kind of have this dedicated drive, and adding some additional parking. So that is another piece of this project that we kept on this list.
Yeah, and it was an estimated cost in 2019 of 4.6 million, and it's highlighted here on the screen in the orange box. And the nice thing about it is, over the last 10 years, we've purchased all of the properties in that area that we intended to, and they've all been demolished at this point. So all of that land is ready for this project to take place at this point. It's just a lot of concrete, and that's really expensive. That's really why that's a very expensive piece of this, of the campus land use project, but probably the highest priority as far as safety, and just efficiency, and it'll really bring a great ambiance to the entry of the school.
Because right now, we have students walking, where buses are pulling in and out, we have cars dropping students off. I think, I think we do the best that we can with the space that we have, but it is a really, just very, very congested area. So I know when John Demme was on the board, we'd worked with Studio GC to kind of have some shovel-ready ideas ready, so if there was some infrastructure grant, or some great grant that, you know, came available, that we could, you know, very quickly engage and have something ready to go. And I think this would be our main priority out of the Studio GC work, is to be able to have a much more dedicated entrance and better traffic flow, separating walkers, car riders, and buses on this site, so.
Great. Yeah, no, that was a good one to point out, especially because it's the most expensive thing on this list right now. And, and really, if you look, like, the total on this list right now is about 13 million in projects of different priorities, but that doesn't even include them all having pricing at this point. So it's just a work in progress that we're always honing, and then my goal would be to try to get this list on to, you know, the near-term projects list of how we're spending those sales tax pay-as-you-go dollars, or for the smaller items, for sure, working with Randy and his department to get them done during, with the rolling working cash, or even out of the O&M budget, depending on the level of the project.
I also wanted to add that if you're a visitor at the high school, and the children, the students are leaving, you can't, you can't leave. You have to wait, because there's a long line of cars that block you out as well. But you have some of these which are sponsorship opportunities, or grants, and then some of the lower priorities. Is there any way, because they're a lower priority, trying to find another resource or another source of funding for those, such as the band trailer, or the additional bandroom, music library storage? I mean, if you have a sponsorship opportunity for a scoreboard, I think, which is twice as much, I think that maybe we could try to find that for the band as well.
Well, we don't have sponsorship opportunity. We just identified those as things that would potentially lend themselves to finding a sponsor for, but I agree with you totally. A band trailer, or something like that, potentially could as well.
Because it's low priority. That means it might be years until they get it, but if we could put on a high priority, not just because of safety, just because it's lower, it's lower price than some of the big ones, maybe we could get that off the list sooner.
Yeah, that's a great point, mhm.
I think there are a couple of safety ones on here that we should point out, too, is our turf at the, at the field, the football and soccer field. We're almost at our replacement level, and I don't know where we are in terms of, is that a year, Randy, two years? Like, how many more years do we have?
It's been 10, right? It's been 10 years, right?
It's, yeah, it has been 10 years. I know they told us it would be last for 20 years, but.
It's not.
It's not. Just the sun's beating it down, the amount of use it gets. We're probably looking at two years, maybe three, depends on how much, if we have football, too. And, you know, the band's been using it, and they say that's the hardest part on the field, is like the flat shoes, not like the cleats, like they use for soccer or football. So it's getting a lot of use by band now that there hasn't been much football.
And replacements, about a million per field, so we could potentially phase those in and do just the football field one year, and then a year or two later, do the soccer field, or vice versa, depending on the conditions of which field needs to be the highest priority. But that's something that, like, we can't not do that. That has to get done. So, great.
Any other comments or questions, or board members?
And you're welcome to email me if you identify things when you're out and about that should get added to this list. I mean, like I said, please keep me informed of, you know, I'm not out in the buildings every day like Randy, or whatever, but Randy's really the one that helps make this list and keep it updated.
All right, thank you. And last up is our energy management administrative report, once again, delivered by Katie.
Okay. All right. It's a brief PowerPoint presentation that I put together to go over some of our big moves in terms of energy management in the district. Wait for a second, get John organized here. Thanks. Okay, so over the past six months or so, the majority of the topics I'm about to cover in this presentation have been brought to the board. So most of what is here isn't going to be big news to you, because our efforts in this area haven't really gotten moving until this year, I would say. However, over the past decade, as a district, we have made many small efforts, so I don't want you to think that we haven't had a focus. So I wanted to highlight some of those things before we move into the rest of these topics. That didn't work, John. Oh, it's very slow. Okay.
It's got a lot of stuff going on.
Okay, all right. So these will be the kind of big moves that I'll talk about, but before that, I just wanted to talk about a lot of the smaller things that we really have made an effort to do over about the past 10 years. Basically, all of the fluorescent lighting, almost all of the fluorescent lighting in the entire district has been replaced with LEDs throughout all the buildings. So there's still a few remaining, but that's been a huge effort, and really has made a big difference in energy savings in the district. Building automation systems for HVAC management and efficiency have been installed. These kind of systems help regulate HVAC systems throughout the day. They can be, the system can be shut down during periods of no occupancy, and all of that makes a big difference, because in the past, you know, you set your thermostat and forget it, and it just stays on all the time, probably at those temperatures. So that's a huge effort that has been made throughout the district. And this is all credit to Randy and his department. I mean, these are things that his department has spent a lot of time and energy on. On a larger scale, we've installed a geothermal system at Urban Early Childhood was the first one that we did. We now have an active geothermal system at Thomas Paine, and then we will be installing one at the sixth grade center as well. And then we've also done a lot of mechanical upgrades, and when we do these upgrades, we always try to pick the most high-efficiency versions of those equipment that's available at the time we do those upgrades. So we've recently changed the chiller equipment out at Liel Elementary, and we're working on the chiller at UMS, and we just wrapped up the UHS chiller as well. And all of those chillers, large mechanical equipment, are more efficient than the versions that were in place before. So that's just the day-to-day. There's a couple other little things that I'll talk about, too, but, you know, we've tried to move more towards digital documents. You know, when you talk about paper usage, we've tried to, you know, we just bought all reusable lunch trays, try to move away from, because it's really the whole cycle of reduce, reuse, recycle, right? It's, that's how we're going to, you have to reduce first before you move on to reuse, and then to recycle, so the whole, and that all kind of relates to energy management, but just greening schools in general is kind of what I was going for in this presentation, not just energy. Okay, now we can move on. All right. So Calpine came to the board in August, I believe, and discussed our previous energy management strategy with the board. In the past, we hedged energy for on-peak and off-peak times. So you can see, I think the dark orange, this was from, directly from their presentation they gave to the board, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time talking about it, but the orange is when we benefited from that strategy, and you can kind of see, and overall, there was quite a bit of savings that we benefited from, because we had a really great rate locked in as rates skyrocketed in the market. Going forward, in the energy management strategy that we just approved, the board approved in September or October, we now are going to hedge 50% of all of our usage, on-peak, off-peak, it's all at 50%. So 50% is a locked-in fixed rate, and 50% will be whatever the market rate is, and that just smoothes our risk, right? So if the, if the market rate goes high, we have a savings. If the market rate goes low, we have a loss, because we'll still pay the market rate for 50%, or the fixed rate for 50%, even if the market rate is lower at that time. But it's a good strategy, it just helps with our overall budget, and that's the strategy that we've moved towards. So that's kind of our overall, and in history, like, this kind of fixed-rate energy contract has been the main way that we've managed energy, right, as a district. So going forward, though, we'd love to get into the more green energy-type moves in the district, and we started that this year for the first time. So really excited, we're going to own our own solar installation at Thomas Paine. It's moving along, they're getting, I mean, all of the panels are purchased, and they're getting this work done, and then they've also, so this was a slide that Verge brought to us in the spring, when we were working on this project. And then also, on the new sixth grade center, this is the panels that will be installed there. The roof membrane work that is part of this project, I believe, is completed at this point, and so then they'll start on the panels at whatever time is ready as part of that larger construction project as well. So that's all very exciting. I'm really looking forward to getting that system up and running and in place. And then very recently, just last month, or in the last couple of weeks, a consultant, an energy consultant was here to discuss the power purchase agreement that we are looking to enter into for the Urban Indoor Aquatic Center. So this will not be a purchase, a system that the school district owns, it will actually be owned by a private company, and they will then pass a portion of the savings of the, that the solar is generating for the energy, on to the Urban Indoor Aquatic Center's bills that we will then have a slightly discounted rate for energy. We're still working on that. I'm hoping to bring a final contract to the board at the next business meeting, is my hope. It still hasn't gone to attorney review, so it might be longer, but whenever I actually have final documents, I will bring them to the board. So then I wanted to talk a little bit about the 2009 Facilities Committee report. This was a slide that was actually presented on May 19, 2009. It was the final report from the Facilities Committee, which, it was a very broad committee. They examined a lot of different issues related to facilities, and this was just one piece. There was a section of the report and a section of the committee that focused on greening of schools. So I just wanted to show that there was quite a few recommendations that came for the greening, this was the slide about greening schools, that came from that report. I'm not sure many of those have been implemented at this point, so that might be something that we want to revisit in the future. But something really interesting, as I was reading that report, just two slides above this, the overall number-one recommendation from the entire Facilities Committee was to do redistricting in 2009. That was the number-one recommendation from this committee, the entire Facilities Committee. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's really important that that gets done, you know, no matter what, and so I'm glad we're finally doing that as a district. Long time coming. And then from there, I wanted to speak just briefly about, so there's a lot out there, you know, we've done a lot of thinking and work on this, and it's just, you know, leading the charge and getting some of these things underway, it's just slow to get started. And then lastly, we've also dabbled in some energy performance contracting, so with our Verge contract for the solar installation, but in addition, Verge has had some various other recommendations. At this point, we haven't taken them up on any of them, but some of the other recommendations that they thought that we could, that they could put together a good energy performance contract for us, involved doing some additional upgrades to our HVAC control systems, doing some building envelope upgrades that would involve replacing windows, caulking, insulation, things like that, that would improve some of the energy efficiency of those buildings, continuing to upgrade some additional lower, sorry, older mechanical equipment for higher efficiency versions, like we've already been doing, but in some of our other buildings, and then some additional solar projects. So those were some various recommendations that they brought to us a year or two ago. And then we also had a recent discussion with another energy service company that Dr. Ivory Tatum met at a conference, and so we're also potentially talking to them. We haven't had any specific proposals from them yet, but it's just building those relationships and seeing what kind of projects really are our priorities, that we then would want their help potentially facilitating. So that's all I had about energy management. I'd like to entertain any questions you may have.
Board, go ahead, Robbie, please, go ahead.
Did the conversation about electric school buses go away?
No.
Are we still waiting for that to be figured out?
So the board, you know, authorized the, for a student to go ahead and apply for that. They extended the application deadline to the middle of February. I don't know the reason that the EPA did that. As far as I know, for a student move forward with submitting that application, and unless we're actually awarded anything, and if we are, we'll bring a full analysis and discussion back to the board about whether we actually want to accept the grant funds. So that's all I know at this point, and so until there's more information on the actual awards, at that time, I'll be sure to bring back any information if we receive one. But that's a good thing to have on here, that we submitted an application, I guess, but I haven't even heard that that application's been officially submitted, so, but they were working on it.
Anyone else?
Just a quick comment, the board did attempt to redistrict this district in 2012, and moved a grand total of like 13 students.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And at that point in time, though, the discussion amongst board members was that we really should be doing it every five years.
Yeah.
At a minimum, and frankly, you know, maybe we should change our board policy to at least do an analysis every five years.
That's great history, Paul.
Anyway, any further questions, comments about this discussion? All right, all right, thank you. Moving on, before our action items, I'd like to recognize Anna Seaman for running our cameras and getting our broadcast out on the internet and on UP-TV. We do have a single action item tonight, and that is the approval of an administrative personnel item. Is there a motion to accept the administrative personnel item? It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Backsley?
Yes.
Member Hostenaka?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes? Vice President Exton?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes, there is a call for future special executive meetings on February 26th, that's a Monday night, the board will be meeting with the ISP Field Director. I believe we're doing it in Need of Purvis again, is that correct? That starts at 6 o'clock. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. All right, so UMS and UHS jazz bands traveled to eastern Illinois this weekend, and our, the UHS Race Street combo placed second place, and our student ambassadors have already kind of pointed this out, but you have an extra picture there and some names. We also had a third place for UMS jazz band, and several students received Outstanding Soloist Award. Jonathan Allison, Will Johnson, Declan O'Connor, Michael Turner, Luke Foley, Colton Rude, and Keandre Towns. So congratulations to all of those students. Next, our student ambassadors also pointed out that we have a Big 12 diving champ, so, sorry, yay, so that's a big deal. So Max Cooper on the right, who's holding up that number one, what is a dive champ for us this year, and so congratulations to Max. And then on the left side is Pete Wald, who placed third in this weekend's Big 12 Conference diving champion, so, competition, so congratulations to both of them. And the team placed a new team record and placed fourth, so congratulations to the team as well. Wrestling, we have two wrestlers, Yani Taylor and Randy Camp. They will be representing Urbana at sectionals this weekend, so we have, we're expanding our girls program. You remember Jordana, who was here, and so now we have more female wrestlers, which is exciting, so congratulations to our UHS wrestlers that are going to be competing at sectionals. Dominica already talked about Jade and Burgess, so she, you know, she's already said how he had to audition. he had to audition multiple times in front of thousands of, you know, like, different sections and different spaces, where he had to compete, and he is going to be singing the National Anthem at the IHSA Boys Basketball Finals. He will perform on March seventh and eighth, so we'll hopefully be bringing you some video and some pictures of that when that happens. So congratulations to Jaden, he was here and took a picture with the students when they were here with Ms. Parker a couple, maybe at our last meeting or reading before. Our Winter Guard continues to just always do a great job at all of their competitions, the lyrical flag routine and Morgan Perez's solo routine, both qualify for state finals next week, so congratulations to our Winter Guard, they're always so amazing. We want to recognize Eve Foley, UHS senior, who was recognized by the Daughters of the American Revolution for the Good Citizen Award. She is also the winner of the Chapter's Good Citizen Scholarship, based on the criteria of dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism. Eve will now move to the next level for the state scholarship competition and be honored at an annual luncheon on Friday, so congratulations to Eve. Public input opportunities, so John and I just had another meeting today with our RSP and Associates consultants, so I was feverishly, oh, and you don't, I was typing in the document, and I guess you didn't, you don't have the live version of this up. Okay, so, that's all right, so, that's okay. So on the, we found out today, a little more information about what the public input process is going to look like, so we'll put this on our website about the redistricting, and so they are going to actually be releasing maps, boundary maps, on Friday, February twenty-third. Those will be kind of public, and people can spend the weekend and a couple days looking at those. They'll also have big maps in the high school, when we're going to be in the commons, we should probably add that to our communication, that will be in the Urbana High School Commons, and that input will be collected for, they will have a Concept A and a Concept B, or maybe they call it a Concept One or Concept Two, I can't remember. But they'll have two different boundary plan concepts, we just kind of talked through the process a little bit today, so I can make sure I have enough people, and we just need to kind of talk about the flow, the in and out, and so we don't have the actual concepts yet, but hopefully those will be forthcoming, and we will be posting them on the redistricting website on the twenty-third, and we'll make sure we put out a lot of communication so people can know to go and look at them. There's also a survey, so the way this will work is they will, we'll talk a little bit, they're going to present both concepts, and then we will just have the room be a big, wide, open space for people to use a QR code where they can put all of their feedback, or we'll also have big white sticky, the big white papers where you can stick things on, and people can make comments. They'll collect all of the written comments, and of course, all of the comments that are added to the survey will also be collected. The survey will open up right around the same time that we will be having the public input time, around the twenty-eighth, and the survey will remain open until March eighth, and then we'll make sure that the maps are added to the website, so people who are not able to attend in person on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth can go in and still look at those maps digitally, and then still be able to make comments via a QR code. So we learned a little bit more about what that process is going to look like. We'll have a space for French families and a space for our Spanish families with translators, and childcare will be available. Upcoming dates, so February twelfth is National African-American Parent Involvement Day, so hopefully, board members, if you get out to some buildings, Catherine will share a little more information about what all the schools are doing on that date, so we're still collecting that information. We have our next family and community cafe at DPW at six PM. We have our first parent workshop for UMS families, I think we can, you know, other families can attend, but this has primarily been set up for UMS to address some of the concerns that we're talking about in terms of vaping and e-cigarette use and marijuana use at Urbana Middle School. So our first session, we have some folks coming in, and they're going to kind of do a cyber guide for parents. If you have a middle schooler, I would encourage you to go, and I encourage you to bring a friend, because you will definitely learn a lot about, just really important information that parents need to know right now. Staff Development Day is also on the fifteenth, so there's no school for early childhood and elementary students, and early dismissal for grades six through twelve. Winter Institute is February sixteenth, and February nineteenth, no school president's day. And then March second, we've talked about, and we'll just kind of keep it in here to keep reminding people that Read Across America is coming, Read Across America Day. And then, I think we have one for you. Two, sorry.
Yeah, that's good. So we have a couple of FOIs that are processed, first is from Tom Schroeder, requesting current student enrollment data for our district and each school in our district, the district and school data should include the same student demographics and other categories that are reported in the Illinois Report Card. And a second from Tom, additionally requesting the student enrollment data for each grade level at each school in our district, grade level data does not need to include demographics or other categories, instead, it should include subtotals by education programs, e.g. FDL, SDL, CCED, Gen Ed. Another from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association, name and email address of any certified staff, teachers, administrators, nurses, counselors, et cetera, who are retiring this year. Board reports, I'd like to start off our board reports with congratulations for Dr. Kim Norton, who was recently named the next superintendent of Heritage School District, so congratulations, Kim. Any other board reports?
I do, I wanted to just remind board members that this is Superintendent Evaluation Month, and just wanted to check to see from the board members here if after our board retreat on the twenty-sixth would work for board members to stick around and do that evaluation.
Or we could do the twentieth after the board, next board meeting.
The time with the ISB representative at our retreat is typically around ninety minutes. So we'd be tacking onto that or tacking onto a board meeting?
Yeah, so if people prefer, we might be able to convince Lori to do a survey, if that is better, if people know tonight, then...
Since Lolly isn't here, could we send out a poll for?
The twentieth and the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
So by when, we've all been received, have received email to do our part of the evaluation, but when do you need them back by?
I need them back, it depends on which day we pick, so I let people know. Yeah, but we may be able to extend a little bit, yeah. So we have kind of a soft deadline right now, she was asking about the deadline.
Right, that's why I'm masking.
But I'm thinking that we're going to end up extending that, so, especially since we still have at least one more direct report coming, so I want to make sure that we have all of that as well. So that date will be extended, but I'll let everybody know when that's going to be, I should just need a few days before the actual, whatever date we select to be able to get that all compiled. You'll get a new date, don't stress about the date you currently have.
Thanks to you and Lola for working on this, it's important, and I really appreciate the fact that we're getting it done for the first time before March.
Yes.
I did also want to mention that the CU Optimists Club's oratorical contest is now open, we just closed our essay contest, so we have judges working on those. This is another opportunity for students to compete for scholarship money up to twenty thousand dollars, so if they keep moving on, the money keeps getting greater, and the great thing about this particular contest is it's open to students ages twelve through nineteen, so it's not just for seniors, and in fact, Urbana has had a winner at our club level and at the regional level for the last two years. So we're hoping to get, you know, more people to sign up. Registration deadline is March first, the actual competition is on March fourth, that is open to the public, it's at six thirty PM at Urbana Free Library, and then the winners from that level have a chance to move on to the regional level, regional level is up to twenty-five hundred dollars, then to the district level, another twenty-five hundred dollars, and then Worlds this year is going to be in July in St. Louis for a chance to win up to fifteen thousand dollars. So definitely a good opportunity, if you guys know anyone in that age range that is interested in oratorical, please let them know, information's on our website.
Any other board reports?
Just real quickly, want to say, thank you for showing the information about the mayoral recognition program, and we're very appreciative of the high school students who have been helping to manage the food pantry at the high school this year. We bring in lots of boxes, and they make sure that they're sorted, and expired food is not being given out, and I appreciate their work a lot, so I'm glad to have them on board.
Thank you, one last call. Hearing none, the chair entertained a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved by Tori, seconded by Ben, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.